All right, it is six o'clock. I would like to officially call this meeting to order. Would you all please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you so much, and it looks like we have a fantastic meeting tonight. So we're starting off with a presentation from the Arts Work Group, and I believe that is going to be Shannon Wang, so it is all yours. Take it away.
All right, fantastic. Thank you all very much for including me and for your time getting me on the agenda. I really appreciate it, so thank you very much. If you all don't know me, my name is Shannon Wang. I am the Chair of the Arts Work Group, which is part of Keep La Plata Beautiful. I am also the owner of Shop 53 right in town, and you have probably seen me do some paintings and things around town. And if you do know that, then you know that I am always trying to push for more art around town and also more fun around town. So one of the things that came up in a conversation was our crosswalks. And so what I'm presenting to you guys today is an idea that I hope you guys will be more interested in getting more information and seeing other options and where we may grow this in the future. So what I'm talking about is crosswalks. So I just called it Creative Crosswalks in downtown La Plata. And can everybody see this okay? It's my first time doing this.
Yes.
Okay, great. And so of course, fairly obvious, the importance of crosswalks are to reduce, I mean, to increase visibility, to hopefully reduce speed, and to get pedestrians in a safe place to cross the street. And I'm hoping that with that, we can add more places to cross, which I think will open up more of the walkability aspect of the downtown and make it more fun. And so this came about in a meeting regarding Main Street, and there was a lot of talk about changes that had been brought up and have been in the works for quite some time about Charles Street. And the downtown is a lot more than just Charles Street. And so we thought, why don't we work on the streets that we can change, and those are town-owned streets? So here are a few pictures that I took last week of current crosswalks and spots where I cross a lot and where potential new spots could be for updating crosswalks. This is obviously on La Grange, going over to-
Shannon, we're still seeing the first page.
Really?
Sorry.
Thank you. I don't know. Right. Is it any different now?
Hit play again.
Nothing?
We're on the importance of crosswalks, which is very important, obviously, but-
Now?
Can you go forward?
Huh. Why is this not working?
There you go.
There we go. Okay. I'm just gonna leave it how it is then. So I apologize for that. Again, my first time, so please excuse technical difficulties. So these were pictures I took last week of La Grange. This is obviously going right to Island Music, and this is just behind where A&R Workshop is. It's over to the right, crossing from Island Music over to the police station. Now I can't. Okay, did it change?
It did.
Okay, thank you. And on Route 6, this is St. Mary's. The left picture is looking at the Carrico, and the right picture, if you see in the background, is the courthouse, and that's Sue Greer's building. And right to the right is our shopping center with Shop 53, House, Green Turtle, and stuff. And we cross, we see a lot of people cross right there as well. Centennial, and I kind of did an aerial shot of a couple of the popular four squares in town, where there could be kind of, if we grew into this and made this a little bit bigger, of a campaign, that those would be good spots to highlight as a bigger art possibility. So creative crosswalks in other towns and cities are becoming quite popular. And here are some options of what other towns and cities have done that I thought might be interesting, not too, too crazy for the town to kind of start off with, just to make, you know, it just more interesting and fun. The hopscotch is, I really liked the bird feet. Anything that we can kind of tie into what the town is about right now. Obviously, the Bird City designation, Tree City, we could do one for the Bee City. Yeah, I kind of liked the hopscotch thing, idea. Here are some other, again, just basic, not-too-flashy designs that we could cater to what you all wanted to see, what the community wanted to see. We could definitely make these a community effort if a design was approved by you all. And this is definitely something that we could ask volunteers for, get input from the town. The left one with the piano keys, I think, would be super fun towards Island Music. If it's not on the corner closest to Route 6, then going up to where the police station is would be really fun. Again, these are just suggestions of what other towns have done. And again, I'm just presenting the idea in hopes that you guys approve the idea and then move forward with trying to get some examples that we could then get approved by you all. It'd be super fun, you know, that's, can you guys see the change with the wine bottles and stuff? Is it still changing on your end?
Not yet. Oh, there it is. You got it.
Sorry, I have to zoom in and then zoom out. Okay. But yeah, it becomes little fun spots. I think stuff like this may be just add a little extra excitement to the town. And working on streets that are not on the main street is just another way to get consumers and visitors to kind of take a look and be like, oh, what's going on down there? And they'd obviously be visible from the streets. And this was fun, kind of using that four-square idea with the different hopscotch kind of ideas with the different feet, I thought was pretty fun. So again, we can hopefully grow this campaign throughout the town. I was really just kind of focusing on La Grange because that's kind of the main strip to Town Hall. Definitely getting public input, not only on locations, but content. We could do RFPs like we did for the Bird City Art Program to get different artists to submit their ideas for approval. And as I mentioned before, kind of one thought of content would be different campaigns that the town is involved with, Tree City, you know, there could be a magnolia tree, things of that nature. And my favorite quote to say when I'm pitching something is just say yes. I felt that that may be a slightly fun and appropriate way to end it. So yeah, that's kind of what I was coming to you with, again, just proposing the idea. None of those were exact things, although I did like the bird feet and the piano keys. But just trying to get the project kind of out there and in your brains and to get any input or questions that you may have, I am happy to-
Well, thank you very much. I appreciate that. I'm gonna start off with Councilwoman Bryant Ward.
Thank you, Shannon. Those are very nice, and I can really see that in our town adding some pop and some, you know, just interest with the amount of pedestrians we have for the various activities. But of course, I do have a question. So crosswalks are, you know, they have always been the little diagonal lines. Is, would that be in compliance or whatever you would say with the crosswalk? Would government approve that, state or whoever? Would that be approved?
As far as I know, they are approved. Many of the pictures that I showed you are crosswalks in Maryland already. That have been done. Now, whether or not they're on main drags, you know, like Route 6, I am not sure. But again, we're talking about secondary roads, but those were all approved, almost all in the United States, and I tried to pull as many from Maryland as I possibly could.
Okay, thank you. I didn't hear that part. And then the other thing, who would be responsible for the maintenance? Because you can see the kind of the wear and tear on the crosswalks that we already have. They look terrible. Sorry. So who would be, with all of that color, who would be responsible for maintaining those?
That would be something that we would include in the RFP. I don't know if the town and Public Works would be responsible. So I'm assuming, as of right now, unless I hear otherwise, that like the mural on the Charles, for instance, there is a maintenance plan that goes along with the proposal. So it would be up to the artist for, you know, however long of time to maintain them. And then hopefully, you know, after that time's over, we change it up. None of these ideas that I want to come with to you guys, do I want to stay forever? I think it should stay fresh and be open to change. So I think after a couple of years, you know, it should be changed. And I agree, when I highlighted them, the pictures were not the best, so, sorry.
Beautiful. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
All right, Councilman Goldsmith.
Yeah, it looks nice. I understand why you can't do it on Route 6. But even on secondary roads, how do you, how much time does it take? How do you control traffic when that's taking place? You can't close out intersections. You do it piecemeal. That's the big concern I have.
Yeah, absolutely. Depending on the design and the time of day, we could block off, you know, one end of the road or one side of the road, do one section, and do the other side possibly the next day. Of course, doing an intersection would be a way bigger hassle. I don't think that we're anywhere near getting to that point. That was just kind of showing, you know, as we grow, that that would be fun to do a whole intersection. But if it was a simple design, like the, you know, the piano keys, the hopscotch thing, those could kind of be taped off and done pretty quickly. And that type of paint does dry pretty fast as well, just like street paint. It doesn't take too long to dry. But it would be a concern, and it would be something that would be part of the package that would have to be approved, obviously, that those details would be nailed down. Hopefully, that answered your question.
Thank you.
All right, Councilman Challenger.
Hi. I love the presentation. I love the art. I love the idea. I think Councilwoman Bryant Ward's question, as far as the effects or the legality of the non-traditional crosswalk, is a good question. And I looked up, I looked up, you know, just outside of our conversation right now, that it seems like the federal government, surprise, surprise, doesn't like them. But a lot of municipalities, like you said, across the country are doing them, and they're doing them not just for crosswalks, but bumpouts. Okay, so kind of creating an even larger space for awareness for pedestrians, not where they, where they, just the narrow crosswalk itself, but almost a warning zone effect to the fact that you're coming up to it. The anecdotal evidence, it appears, from students near schools and teachers and crosswalk patrol, is that people slow down because it's different. It's a highlight to their eye. You see that a lot when the federal government looks at things like uneven terrain. They want you to have different color there to alert almost your subconscious peripheral vision that there's something different. But I did see that it looked like in Iowa, in a great, looks like a rainbow-colored crosswalk, but the USDOT asked them to remove it. And there have been other municipalities where they were asked to remove it. I don't know, you said you pulled some from other places in Maryland?
Yeah, a bunch of the pictures were from Baltimore. I should have listed where they were, but it was more north, for sure. Either in Baltimore or just north of Baltimore. Yeah.
I think as long as we could kind of confirm a couple of things. I mean, number one, that we're okay doing this or we're okay with the repercussions of doing it and having to remove it. And then number two, that it kind of conforms to what our goals are as a town. And I like that you incorporated, well, it can be essentially anything on a rotating basis. But I just, I like the overall idea as long as we're good to go with it. But thank you for presenting. That's my only caveat there is, you know, are we good with doing it? Maybe that's something we could talk to our town attorney, or, you know, maybe there's a smaller municipality that you reached out to that's not quite the city. I don't know why they wouldn't give the city a problem and would decide to give us a problem, but who knows? Thanks.
Yeah, sure. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Jenkins.
Thank you, and thank you, Shannon, for bringing this to our attention. I'll be right up front. I'm all for this. I've done a lot of research. In fact, I provided some materials to Shannon and Kelly of how they've done this in big cities, smaller cities, and even rural areas. And I certainly understand and appreciate the concerns and questions about maintenance and traffic solutions and all that. But I think if I could just add on to what Councilperson, Councilmember Challenger just talked about goals, from my perspective, this kind of activity does meet several goals that are in our comprehensive plan, specifically goal number two, number 16, number 19, and 26. And they all relate to, you know, our downtown, revitalizing it, creating energy and interest. It also helps us slow down the traffic, because there have been studies, and I think Councilmember Challenger just referred to that, that we have something different. It does slow traffic down. Thank God, we haven't had any pedestrian issues per se, but I think this goes toward slowing down the traffic as well. And then, to be very frank about it, I also think this is an opportunity to, again, to engage our citizens in their town. This could be a terrific, quote, "community project," where we get the business community, La Plata Business Association, other entities could contribute, and this could be a great energizer to get the community engagement in this. So thank you again for bringing this forward.
Yeah. Thank you for your efforts, your participation in moving forward. And I also wanted to make sure that I was clear that I was not presenting as being the person that would do this. I feel like I am a huge advocate for the arts, and I have done quite a bit in La Plata, which I'm very proud of and I'm very excited about, but I also want to see other people do stuff. So my goal is for not me to do this. It's to get other people pumped to do it, do the actual artwork. So I just want to make sure that was clear.
Thank you. Mr. Stahl.
I think I'm on there now. I've been trying to get off of the mute. A couple of things, Shannon. Do you know if any of these type of drawings are available in the elastometric material that we use? Most of the crosswalk material for federal standards today are all done in that hot-applied plastic. And so most of those type of crosswalk materials, I wasn't sure if that was something where we could create the design and then hot-apply it like we do the crosswalk materials today, so that we're not actually using paint, but we're actually using the plastic material, which does last considerably longer and is also much more reflective and also lasts considerably longer than the paint does.
You got a new friend there, bud. He's loving ya.
Oh, your dog.
Yeah. Yeah, that could absolutely be an option. Another one I was kind of thinking, so that it wasn't all the same. I think a lot of the, some of the descriptions or options that I brought up had almost like a border of the white reflective, and then within that was some type of design. I felt like that might be a little bit more forgiving for changing it up in the future. But again, I don't know a whole lot about the process and the plastic stuff. I didn't know if that was easy to take up so that we could change it up, you know, every once in a while. But of course, safety is obviously the most important thing. So, but I had envisioned the normal white kind of reflective powder glittery stuff be on the edge and then something else, you know, be within that. But again-
Some of the pictures that you showed actually looked like they were almost the plastic material and not really paint. They did look like they were applied onto the asphalt, which is, you know, done regularly with crosswalks. We hire a company to come in and plastic apply it to our streets when we do that. And we've tried to do that as we've upgraded crosswalks throughout, because number one, it lasts so much longer, and it's reflective in nature.
Sure.
I certainly understand the federal government sets the standard for the uniform traffic safety. And so the main problem they run into is when they use federal funds. If you use federal funds for road upgrades, which most of the states do, you do run into that challenge with, you know, you have to file, you have to follow federal standards for uniforms traffic safety in that situation. And they're not very forgiving. So most of the states who utilize federal funds, we don't generally fall into that criteria, so I think we have a little bit more leeway. And the nice thing with our streets is that our highest speed limit on any town street is 25 miles an hour. So we're not having crosswalks on town streets that are really high-speed crossings in the situation. So it is a little bit better for us in that situation. And, you know, I think could be a little bit easier to use some other pictures and things like that within the crosswalk nature. So I don't, there's certainly no problem with this. It would be nice if we could figure out a way to do it in the hot-applied plastic. You know, use the artists to do, to actually do the designs and then have them made up. And, you know, we can purchase them and then just come in and hot-apply them in the field like we do with the current crosswalks.
Yeah. I mean, the hopscotch one with the bird prints and stuff did look like that. And yeah, if that's what you all feel more comfortable with than going with the painted ones, even in just certain areas, like 100% open to that, too.
Okay. I just throw that out there as an option. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Bobby. Ms. Harrington.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. While we were talking, I pulled up the Federal Highway Administration's FAQs, and they ask a question. Does the MUTCD allow intersection murals or widespread application of artwork to the street? And they do not. They have several reasons why. But I think we definitely should look into that when we do this. And I like Bobby's idea of potentially using the materials that we use for crosswalks. But there are some reasonings as to why they don't particularly allow those, and it's something that we should probably take into consideration as part of this.
Thank you for that. I love that, the whole idea. And it sounds like the council is all in favor for it, but I will get a consensus at the end to see whether we move on with this. It is an opportunity for us to kind of take the focus off of Charles Street, where we can't control that yet, and put it on streets, as you said, that we can control. And putting it on La Grange and Queen Anne and St. Mary's, that might give us an opportunity to kind of shift and perhaps make that more of a main street for us, or at least start enhancing that. My concern, because I think worst-case scenario, I think of my boys, and I apply all, everything to what they would do, and they would see hopscotch, and they would be in the middle of the street doing hopscotch because it's there. So that one concerns me a little bit. I think with the piano keys, I would love for that one to be the first one, since our mural there was the first one put up there. And I think, just hearing what Bobby was saying, that maybe the plastic can be applied easier with that because they're blocks, you know, so it's not so much of cutting, it's rectangles, and they're different size of rectangles. And my other concern was, it does need, and you address this, it does need to look like a sidewalk and with those reflective, I mean, a crosswalk and with those reflective tapes, it will. My other thing would be, when, if the council, if it is the will of the council to have this move on to the next step, I would love for the chief to be involved as far as thinking about safety issues. If putting a decorative, and he might even chime in now as if, Chief, if you know anything about this, but putting decorative crosswalks, and yes, it definitely slows down the traffic, it will. Does it create an unsafe environment? And would one that is being so close to the one that would be more of a concern, I think, would be the one that is right on Route 6 in La Grange, that crosswalk right there versus the one that from the police station to the back of Keith's property. That might be a concern, but again, I'm not the safety guru. The chief is. Chief, are you on tonight? Go ahead, Brent.
Chief is not with us. He's-
Driving.
Yes, he is driving. So I believe Lieutenant Payne is on the call. But yes, you all bring up good points, and it may be in the best interest of time that staff sort of works parallel tracks where Shannon, maybe you could come back to us with a primo location for which crosswalk you'd like us to consider. One thing we do need to investigate, and Mr. Stahl may already know the answer. Many times, state highway, besides the drivable area that we think of Route 6, they also control a certain distance back from that road. So we need to find out if those crosswalks at Route 6 and, say, La Grange are within the state's control that you sort of indicated as part of your presentation, Shannon. But then we can also look at the legality. We can work with our town attorney to make sure that we're not going to be exposing the town in any way. You know, I just think if someone were unfortunately struck in the crosswalk and we have a painted crosswalk, is that going to expose us to litigation potentially? There's a number of things that we will investigate, but I guess tonight we are looking to see if it's something the council would like us to further investigate. So I will go mute now. Just wanted to thank Shannon for her presentation.
And thank you for that, Brent. So I will ask the council if it is your will to move forward with this. Councilman Goldsmith?
Yes, I think it's something we should explore once we get the answers to the questions that were brought up.
Fantastic. Councilman Challenger?
Yes, I'm in support of exploring this further. Thank you.
Councilwoman Bryant Ward?
Yes.
And Councilman Jenkins?
Yes, I am, and I put in the chat, too, links to a community in Georgia that has a program underway right now. Thank you.
And I am in favor of this, too. I think it's an exciting opportunity. Should it all fall in with all the legal stuff and safety and all that, I think that will just be- and in safety and all that, I think that will just be one more thing that enhances this town and starts to bring an identity to our town. So thank you so much Shannon for doing um, this presentation and your excitement. You still had energy. I know you're tired, but you still had energy.
It's, oh, I'm sorry.
Well, I look forward to seeing more about that, so thank you so much and thank you for seeing us this evening.
Thank you all, thank you.
All right, next on the agenda is our special events permit. And will that be Colleen that will be up on?
Yes, good evening, Council, and Lieutenant Payne is gonna also assist.
Fantastic, floor is yours.
Okay, um, thank you for having us back after the last meeting. Um, a few comments were made that we wanted the attorney to review the permit and um, add a disclaimer um, where the town is not hosting the event. He made a couple corrections and additions to the permit and that was attached. And then it was also requested for the special event uh, permit fee schedule, and you'll see that there on the screen now. That was developed with the police and Public Works, working with Kevin, to come up with some fees that would get us started on charging for these events. Um, this definitely does not cover all the staffing costs that we have for these events, but at least it gives us a little bit to come back and and help out with the budget.
Good, um, I'm gonna open it up to uh, council questions and I have some uh, questions myself that I will um, ask after any of the council members have a question. Anyone? Councilman Challenger?
Yes, thank you Mayor. Um, is there any concern about our fees that this would preclude some, some group that has had an event in the town from doing so? In other words, um, it's hard to know, you know, of course, we would rely or the the applicant would rely on the police department and Public Works to let them know what personnel would be required depending on attendance. But based on your experience, Colleen, with the types of events in town, are there any groups that would be adversely affected by this fee schedule in a way that they wouldn't, they wouldn't want to permit in our town?
Um, I can't speak personally for each of the groups, but I know from my experience from working for nonprofits before I worked for the town, that was something you always budgeted in. Of course, you would take anything for free that you freed up more funds to go back to the cause, but when you're doing your event budget, you should always budget in for those police costs, for rental costs. Um, I don't think any event I ever worked on, we got anything for free. Um, even when I worked at hospice of Charles County, you know, we did something at the fairgrounds and we were charged police fees for the security, which, you know, rightfully so. Um, you know, looking at the events that we do have, we have about seven to eight additional events that we have supported, um, non-town events. And you know, those run from, you know, having a 5K which takes more officers and Lieutenant Payne could say the exact number um, for that. And then most of the other events, you know, take a couple officers, besides Rocktoberfest, that is, you know, a huge event. Um, and for Public Works, the most for an event are two Public Works staff members um, right now, based on what these events that we've done in the past. Doesn't mean that couldn't change, you know, if it was a larger event to come in.
Right. I just, I and it, it sometimes numbers are so abstracted or, you know, it doesn't seem like, um, doesn't seem exorbitant as you look at it. And certainly, I think we owe it to our residents to make sure that we're not, you know, giving everybody a free pass when they do pay everywhere else, like you said. So I think um, that's helpful for me to know. Thank you.
All right, Councilwoman Bryant Ward?
I am really happy to see this fee schedule. Um, it is not uncommon. I've, again, like you, Colleen, worked for several nonprofits and we always had to, you know, pay for the security officer that showed up. We had to get permits um, in order to do certain things, um, food permits. Um, so this is not uncommon and this looks really good. Um, it's not, it's a really a lot less than what I've seen for other um, in Prince George's County and some here in the county um, outside of our town. So I am, I'm happy to see us moving in this direction.
Thank you. Councilman Jenkins?
Thank you for bringing this forward and I know this has been a lot of work and so I appreciate you working on this and bringing it forward. I just have a a comment, um, well, no, a question. I I'm assuming the actual proposed fee schedule is basically to cover the town costs. I mean, it's not quote, making a profit, it's it's really to cover our costs.
No, it definitely not making any profit and this is not even covering all the staff time. This is Kevin, um, I don't know if Kevin's on the call, um, but they work to come up kind of with a a median range to start with.
Okay, that's, and then I I noticed on the actual application, the revised application, which I guess is the next handout, I was just curious to know um, which is very comprehensive application, I was, I noticed that um, you on the first page under the block event information and uh, and you asked for the venue and the location and then you have boxes to check off, you know, where they might be located. Would it be too much work or would it be appropriate to maybe have a a generalized location map so people know where these areas are?
That's, that's something we could work on to attach to that.
Because some people or some organizations may not necessarily know or be familiar with La Plata per se, and so this would just help them understand where these locations are. That's all. Thank you again, thank you.
Thank you, um, Colleen, and you know, our, the previous uh, council, as you well know, we went back and forth on this and we really um, struggled with charging or implementing a charge as we've gotten to see how much time and how many officers and Public Works um, uh, workers it takes to effectively put this event together. Very clear um, that, you know, we are giving it away for free. The one thing is, and and uh, Councilman Jenkins kind of made sure that it was mentioned a little bit, that we are not making a profit on that. So who dictates the number of officers that are needed and um, how is that figured out? Or Public Works? How is that figured out?
Well, the way we've done it in the past for the events is each department that it pertains to has decided how many officers or how many Public Works staff. And I know with the officers they have for the 5K walk run, they have that set. They, we have a route, um, we'll have, we'll have a 5K route and we'll have a walk route. If someone wants to do one of those types of events, they have to use our approved routes. They've worked well, we know how many officers are needed for, you know, for each station for that. Um, and same with Public Works, um, I would say Jeff has a very good handle on knowing how many people and him and I kind of talk it out based on the events that we also do for the town, we can kind of figure out what what their needs are.
And I can, I can quickly give you those numbers if you like.
Hey, go ahead Mike.
Uh, so for example, when we do the uh, 5K event, that's a total of 11 posts, one of them's un- unmanned, but we have 10 officers have to uh, work that event. And then when we get down to the homecoming parade, that takes about seven officers, the Alzheimer's Walk is seven as well. And then during Rocktoberfest, what we do is we have uh, five officers sign that day, two in the morning, which is a five-hour shift apiece. And then the last three guys, they work five hours, that's about 25 hours of overtime right there just for Rocktoberfest. And plus on top of that, with the Rocktoberfest event, we're also dealing with alcohol as well during that event. Which could be a challenge.
And that, and that's true. Um, with the 5K, it's interesting, so you say you have 10 um, officers and if we do the math on that one, each officer's three, so each officer would be um, you know, times three and then times 10. So you're looking at a hefty, a hefty for that, that could be an hour. So that, I, I know that it it takes a lot of officers and I'm not um, I'm not disputing that at all, so I think people need to look at that, how much time is there? The other thing is, a question that I would have is, um, I know our great explorers are out there and do we charge, you know, for the time of the explorers or is that to go credit towards their um, service?
The explorer hours are credited because they have to do a certain amount of community service to maintain their ranks within the, within their organization, so we do not charge. And the the other challenge is um, the availability of the explorers, because some events, we might have a couple, they they may be gone, they, you know, they could be at a school trip on the weekend, so it it just varies. Um, thankfully, the last few events we had, you saw them in a, you know, five or six out there, which was a very good showing for them.
Yeah, they have, and I love to see them, they are doing a great job. So you guys, I know that's uh, um, Jason, that is with them, uh, I'm very pleased to see them among town. Um, I think this is a great thorough uh, application. I really appreciate all the hard work that you guys have done to thoroughly do this and to protect our town and make sure it's fair for everyone. So um, I am in favor of this. Uh, Councilman Challenger, did you have your hand raised?
Yeah, sorry, I just, I just wanted to say that, and I think you just mentioned it right there, um, that from a liability perspective, the rules and regulations section is very clear um, as to who is responsible for what and what additional responsibilities are required of folks that are using our town. So I appreciate that, I think it's helpful to have it on the application. So if there's any dispute, they can always go back and say, well, this is what you signed up for, right? So I think it's, I think it's great.
Good, and so Brent, do we need to uh, do anything to move this forward or is this just an FYI that um, or do we need a consensus? Do we need blessings? What do we need?
I think we'll start with a consensus. And then if we need to bring something back to you, because I'm sure we're gonna have to amend something, uh, whether it's the fee schedule to incorporate these fees into our current, for our fiscal year 2022, uh, fee schedule, uh, we will do so, we'll bring it back to you for that purpose.
And I can see all of council, so uh, if you're in favor of moving it on, just shake your head yes, if not, shake it no. We got thumbs up, all right, all five of us are in favor of moving this forward. So thank you, thank you Colleen, thank you Mike, for all your hard work, really appreciate it.
Thank you for your time, have a good evening.
You as well. Um, all right, next on the agenda, I think that's gonna be Mike, is the Vera Mobility?
I had to unmute myself again. I just muted myself and I went through, uh, so this, we know this has been going on for the last uh, a few years, but in December 2019, uh, the Plata Police Department signed on as an MOU partner with the Howard County Police Department for the Red Light Photo Enforcement Partnership. And just to let you know, other partners of the MOU included the Bel Air Police Department, Charles County Sheriff's Office, Chevrolet Police Department, Cottonton City Police, Green Belt Police, Hagerstown Police, the Howard County Police Department, Hyattsville, Landover Hills and Morningside Police Department. Although the Howard County Police Department administers a program, Vera Mobility by contract conducts the site research, they obtain the permits and they interact with the Maryland Department of Transportation. They also manage and monitor the technology and assist in managing the program. As the town grows, ensuring the safety of our um, motoring public is paramount. In a recent article in AAA Foundation noted that two people die uh, every day on US highways when someone runs a red traffic signal. To add to the human factor, there are many more individuals who are injured during these collisions. And the locations that we had evaluated were Crane Highway at Shiny Willow Way and Crane Highway at Charles Street. And all the proposed sites will require permissions to place a photo enforcement camera in the right of way. And the monthly lease per camera is $2,450 and the fee per photo enforcement violation issued is $11. The fine set by the State of Maryland for red light photo enforcement citation is $75. There are no other fees or costs to the town during the exploration period. Vera Mobility had to refresh the agency's documents uh, with the Maryland Department of Transportation on September 27th of 2021 and it will take approximately 120 days to review and render, render a final decision. And uh, we'd like to thank Mayor James, because she has assisted with following up well, with the program with the Maryland Department of uh, Department of Transportation and that follow-up has been greatly appreciated by the police department and Vera Mobility. And during COVID, the application review and approved process have been extremely slow and is the agency's recommendation to move forward with a contract with Vera Mobility in its effort to continue to explore the feasibility of a red light photo enforcement traffic safety program.
Mike, a question for you, when you said, and and I just probably don't have my listening ears on, you mentioned $11 and then $75. What is the $11 for?
The processing fee.
Okay, so that, because I was gonna say, we should not be charging $11 when uh, paparazzi, I thought it was paparazzi taking my picture up at Billingsley and it wasn't when I got it in the mail and it was $75, so I really thought that I could, I was clear on that one, but pictures don't lie. Um, no, and and I am in favor of those two spots, I know as you have, and thank you for the shout-out on that, you know, I uh, I totally believe in the use of this red light uh, camera for our safety. We have had some horrific accidents um, on Shining Willow Way as well as the intersection of uh, 301 and Route Six for, from people running the red light. So uh, the Secretary of Transportation heard what we had to say and uh, hopefully we will get a favorable result um, now that he's heard it again. And if not, we'll appeal it, I think that this is important enough to do. So um, I I have no uh, questions, uh, I think this is something that we should continue to do, especially when we have two areas that are pending and haven't gotten that final thumbs up yet. So I'm gonna ask council, if you have any questions, comments, um, are you in favor of, favor of uh, continuing with this contract? Uh, Councilman Jenkins?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, um, I'm in favor of continuing, I just had a, I guess, a question. So we have two intersections that are now under consideration. And do we have any expectations when that might occur? I mean, why there might be approval? And then what would be the timeline for the actual installation of those particular cameras? I I guess I'm just unclear of the timeline now.
I'm not, you know, I'm not clear on what the timeline's gonna be, but as far as the intersections, it has to be approved uh, through the Maryland Department of Transportation and that's pretty much what we wait for now. As far as the installation process, that's something that the chief may know, that I'm not aware of, but I can definitely uh, get that answer for you and email it to you tomorrow.
And then who, what happens if I run a light and I get fined? So who who administers the, the processing of the photograph and then sending out of the violation to me? I mean, who who does that?
Like I said, I'm not very familiar with the Vera Project, that's something that the chief and I know uh, the chief, Mayor, I've been working with, but I know that it's gotta be um, approved by one worker, then it has to be approved by an officer and then it goes back out and sent, so it's basically double, triple check before the violation is sent.
Oh, okay, all right, and then just one final question, uh, would there be any consideration for additional areas for cameras in the future?
There could be um, for additional, but I know that when we had Howard uh, Police, they came out, they kind of looked at our traffic data, where our collisions were, and those were the two sites based on data that was collected that would um, that, which it best to have two cameras installed at, those two locations.
All right, thanks a lot, thank you.
Brent, you wanna jump in before I get Councilman uh, Goldsmith?
Yeah, I was just gonna sort of uh, follow up to what uh, Lieutenant Payne was saying is, yeah, that to confirm that what he says, you know, it will be reviewed, each uh, snapshot, if you will, is reviewed and processed and checked and double-checked, so to speak. Uh, because like the mayor, my wife has a vast experience with uh, these photo sensor cameras, unfortunately. And yeah, the process would take 120 days from the September 27th is when we expect to hear uh, something back from uh, MDOT, which uh, you know, during COVID, I think some of the, some of the agencies aren't maybe always meeting their, their timelines, but uh, that's just a general rule of thumb. I'm not sure how long it would take to, to get the program up and launched, I would imagine six months or more, uh, then we get into sort of uh, materials, things of that nature. Uh, but yeah, this is a, the, I guess, the second extension, and I think the way the MOU with Howard County is written is up to seven extensions. Uh, we fully expect to know something before we'll need to extend it to seven for the seventh time, but at the same time, as you said, we will need to continue to evaluate other intersections in town and as uh, we feel warranted, we can sort of evaluate future intersections for consideration uh, to request this service.
All right, thank you. Councilman Goldsmith?
Yes, I I'm always caught up on money issues and such, and maybe I know it, nodded off here, but did you say it's $2,000 per site to evaluate it and get it started? But as I'm hearing, the $75 goes back to But as I'm hearing, the $75 goes back to the state. So are we paying out but getting nothing back in?
It's my understanding we would try to, I believe we receive the fees. Otherwise, I'm not sure why we would be doing the program other than for safety's purposes, which is, you know, relevant in its own right. But I believe we estimate that, and Chief Schenner has all the, of course, documentation as far as the program goes. But, you know, we estimate that it would be a profitable relationship.
It wouldn't be, and that's not the reason to do it.
Right, right.
We would not be losing money on it.
But I believe we had Shining Willow Way closed last night, or 301 was closed at Shining Willow Way due to an auto accident. So it's, you know.
Right.
And it just says the fine is set by the state of Maryland for the violation, which is set.
Right. They put a cap on it, so you can't go above $75 with your program.
Thank you for that. Councilman Challenger?
Yeah, so this, the first question may be for Mr. Manuel, and the second, I guess, you might have just answered. But so as I read it, you said this was the second extension, and then as it reads, it allows for seven one-year renewal option. So this, we, sorry, I hear an echo there, but we just renew this every year? Is that essentially what we've, what we're doing?
Yeah, the way it's written, it requires an annual renewal because it expires, I believe, the 31st of December every year, calendar year. So the new renewal will take effect January 1, 2022, and will extend for obviously the remainder of the calendar year.
And I'm assuming, of course, Officer Payne, we've had no problems with this company or as far as administering these citations.
Based on all the other agencies that are enrolled in this program, there's been no issues.
Okay. And then the second question is kind of getting to what Mr. Goldsmith was, but from a different perspective. Like, we know that in other areas, especially DC is notorious, right, for their speed light cameras or their speed cameras, which is a whole different ball of yarn. But they've used that in the past to essentially tax their own citizens, right, for, for their own gain, those government units. But we're not, we're not, it doesn't sound like that is directly the same as this in that the state sets the fee, you know, we're, we're at the max, it sounds like, of $75 per violation. But the town is not, I don't know, what is our income, quote unquote, from this program? Do we know what those numbers are?
I do not have the numbers. I know if Mr. Manuel has them or?
Yeah, I can look back through my notes because, you know, it has been two, over two years where we, when we got into this program. But like you say, you know, our, our intention is not.
I mean, we have two traffic lanes, right? So it's not, it's not gonna be a windfall to the town. But I would just never want us to get to the point where we're basing certain elements of our budget based on potential bad drivers, right? We want to increase safety, but we don't want to do that as a financial incentive to our residents. That's all I would say to that.
And the main thing, what Vera Mobility does is they provide the data to them. They speak MDOT, so to speak. So they're gonna provide the data. And if we don't meet the warrants, we will not be given the right to place those cameras at those intersections. So that's, you know, it's a very tightly run program, if you will. It's not like you can arbitrarily place cameras wherever you want, whether they be red light cameras or speed cameras. I think in Maryland, even for speed cameras, they have to be within a certain distance of a school. So you cannot arbitrarily place those in random locations just because you have a speeding problem. There's sort of a rational nexus between speed and school zones. So it's, let me go back, if you don't mind. You can continue to discuss, and I'll see what I can find within my Vera Mobility folder.
Any other questions from council? A lot of the traffic that we do have on 301 is from people traveling down to Virginia. So Mike, and I don't know if you know this, and I'll ask it anyways, but isn't there, do I recall from a couple of years ago that it was mentioned that there will be a probationary period where, I mean, there'll be snapping pictures of the red light ones, but they would be getting, it would, would be more of a, I don't know if it's a warning or what, but it's, there's a trial period, if I recall. Is that correct? Do you remember that?
Yeah, I know that anytime you put up like a stop sign or at a new intersection, that you have to give 30 days until you can start enforcing, and most likely it's gonna be the same with the red light camera. But I mean, I, that I don't know because the red light has been there. As far as a violation, I'm not sure.
Okay, good. Brent, do you have anything else on that?
I do not. I believe most of the, my knowledge from Chief Schenner was during conversation. I do not believe there's a written. But I'm sure Chief Schenner has all this information.
And we can get that to you guys if you have any other questions. If it means that you can't make a decision tonight, then we could postpone it. But I have no problem continuing a contract, extending our contract with them, especially since we are in a period where we're waiting for an answer to see if we will be approved for those two sections for lights. Does, are you all in favor? Or anybody have any, you know, heartache about it and not going? I see two, I see three. Matt, you okay with extending it? Okay. So we've got a consensus. And if we are all in favor of moving forward with the Vera Mobility contract and just extending it another year.
All right. We'll bring back a resolution next week for your consideration. And Chief Schenner very well could be on the call and answer, easily answer many of your questions that Mike and I are struggling with tonight.
Well, you did well. And I would encourage council to jot yourself a little note for next week. Should you have any questions that have not been answered? All right. Thanks, Mike. You did well.
Thank you, Mayor Council.
All right. Moving on, Baker Tilly report. I believe this is probably Kevin and Bobby.
Yes. Good evening, Mayor. Kevin Greenville, Town Treasurer. The town engaged Baker Tilly to assist in reviewing our major facility fee for water and sewer services. This review evaluated the amount of the fee and its ability to equitably assess the cost of water and sewer infrastructure needed to provide services to new customers. Tonight, we have with, with us Nick Dragasic. He will be presenting his findings and going over the report attached to tonight's agenda. Nick is a managing director at Baker Tilly, Baker Tilly, excuse me, and has 30 years of management experience. He has been directly responsible for numerous utility expense and cost analysis studies, fiscal impact studies, as well as in the development of Excel-based computer models for clients across America. With that, I will hand it over to Nick.
Thank you, Kevin. I had to be with you this evening. A lot with Kevin and Bobby on coming up with a system because there's a lot of information needs in order to do the project right. You know, when you're setting your sewer, you call a major facility fee, and excuse me why you call it a WAC or a SAC, because most of the states that I work in, a WAC is a water access charge and a SAC is a sewer access charge. So WAC and SAC just kind of rolls off my tongue. The concept is the same, though. The key is coming up with a system that's fair and equitable, understanding that fair has different meanings to different people. But in this case, the way we have always approached these projects is fair means that everyone pays for the amount of assets that they'll benefit from when they connect to the system. And, and so we went and gathered a lot of information, all the systems that you currently had, what additions you need to accommodate growth, and put together a plan. Now, as I stated in the memo, there's three primary methods for evaluating the assets. The buy-in method, which means it's like I'm buying a membership in a club. Club is worth a million bucks, and you know, it can handle a million people, so my share is a buck. And of course, determining what the value is is another issue. The incremental cost method means you're making people pay for additional capacity you need to serve them, but they're not paying for the existing capacity. And the combined cost method is a combination of the two. You have some capacity to serve clients, but you need to add on to serve all of the clients you're anticipating you're going to have to serve in the future. We, looking at your system, we believe the combined cost method was the most appropriate for determining your major facility fees. You have capacity to put some capacity left in the system, but you need to add capacity to serve projected growth going forward over the next five years. And so maybe I'll just, you know, feel free to ask questions at any time because it's easier to, I think, to address the answer going through the concept than to try and go back. Okay, so we looked at basically four different ways to value the assets based on those concepts. The first was the original cost. What did the residents of Platte pay when they constructed the water and waste park? What have they invested in them to date? Next concept was original cost less accumulated depreciation. Some of the assets have been in the ground for a while, and one might argue they're depreciated not worth as much as they were when they originally bought, and we shouldn't have to pay for that depreciation that's occurred. The next concept is replacement cost. So what's the value of someone connecting? Many people argue the value is, what would it cost to replace that system today? And the fourth one was replacement cost less accumulated depreciation. What would it cost to replace that system today if somebody is worn out? So what would it cost to do that? And those are the four primary concepts that we looked at. So the, the acquisition cost is clearly just what's on your books. You, you do have some improvements and adjustments you've made to those booked assets, so we've added those in as a adjusted asset cost. The book six, June 30th, 2020, book value is your adjusted cost less depreciation comes from your financial statements. So if you go to your conference of annual financial reports and look at your assets, you'll see assets less accumulated depreciation gives you your net asset value. And then the replacement cost in 2021, we took the acquisition cost and inflated that to 2021 using the American City and County Long Term Average Annual Construction Cost Index. So why did we choose that? There's a lot of indexes you could pick. You can pick an arbitrary interest value. You could take the average interest cost of the life of the debt you've issued to finance the assets. But the American City County Cost Index is an index that's maintained by them over a long period of time. It's applicable to construction costs incurred by cities and counties across the United States. And we believe it provides a reasonably good estimate for that purpose. Now, the other key is, you know, when you're looking at determining a major facility fee, you only want to charge the connecting people for assets that they will gain some value from. And so there's the system-wide assets, not every asset within the utility because they don't all benefit from them. For instance, the sewer line that runs in front of your house serves you, but doesn't provide much value to a new customer connecting. So we had to work with Bobby and Kevin to determine what were system-wide assets that we would include in the plan. And those are the only ones that are in there. So if you're looking at your, I'm, I'm on page four right now. So the system-wide assets are broken into categories, buildings, class CIP, which is actually assets you're currently constructing, improvements other than buildings, infrastructure, land, other equipment, vehicles, and mobile equipment. And based on the sewer system right now, you have sent about a little, oh, $33.5 million acquiring those assets. You've added $150,000 to them since you've acquired them. So you have about 33.7 million in assets currently, based on what you paid, what you've added to them. There's $15.5 million of depreciation. So the book value is 18 million, 18.1 million. If we look at the replacement cost less depreciation, it's 37.3 million. So that's kind of the realm across what's existing in the ground right now. You have some assets in your CIP that you plan to add to, to your system, total about 1.8 million in assets. And we want to add those in because you're putting in place in 2021, and some of the connects are going to benefit from them. You also have a small amount of contributed assets. And so if you look at your balance sheet, you'll see contributed assets. When we take those out, because those are assets that the town did not pay for, our customers did not pay for their, contributed to the utility, we want to subtract those out. The last piece is we want to subtract outstanding principal on debt because we want to collect principal and interest later, and you actually don't own that asset right now. So that's kind of from the physical asset piece. The last asset that you have near funds are your cash and cash equivalents. It's monies that current customers have paid in that you've built up in reserves and will be used to fund future capital or pay future operating costs and will benefit future customers. So when you put all those together, your current assets are about 39.4 billion in the sewer utility. And when you add in improvements of 39.6 million, the depreciation is 15.5 million. So your book value is about $24 million. The replacement cost less depreciation gets you to $43.3 million worth of assets. This is really boring stuff. I know. It's a lot of numbers. So if I'm getting too much into the, into the weeds, please let me know. So in order to determine the value per gallon, we take those current assets and divide it by the capacity of the system. And the, the average customer uses 220 gallons a day. So we get the current value per equivalent dwelling unit. The, based on the acquisition cost, that's about $4,374. If you look at the book value, it's 2,671, and the replacement cost is $4,804. So just for the existing assets that you have, those you plan to buy in 2021, you range from about 4.3, $4,300 to about $4,800 right today. So if I were going to connect in, that would be, you know, and you weren't making any other changes, that would be a reasonable fee for me to pay, somewhere in that range. We have that outstanding debt that's going to get paid off, including interest for assets. And those assets are providing additional capacity. And so we have about $2.3 million in outstanding debt, and they're all listed within the report. I have about $300,000 in interest on that debt. So I have about 2.6 million in principal and interest that I need to recover from those connections. That's about $1,000 per EDU for the outstanding debt on a acquisition cost basis and about $1,140 on a replacement cost basis. So when you put together that current outstanding debt and the current assets, it's $5,388 for acquisition costs and $5,946 for replacement costs. Now you have a CIP that says we have to buy some assets to improve the capacity of our sewer utility to accommodate these new customers. And your future assets in your CIP are about $12,353,000. And those are costs you incur to provide additional capacity. The interest cost on those is another $5 million. So totally about 17.3 million in principal and interest you will incur to provide capacity for future customers. And so you need to add that cost to your major facility fee, or you're gonna pass those on to your existing customers. So the extent that new customers don't pay for new capacity, existing customers will pay for that. So when all is said and done, and you put together your existing assets and take out the outstanding debt and the contributed capital and add in your current debt service and your future debt, you come up with $10,872 per equivalent dwelling unit as the asset acquisition, asset acquisition cost and about $13,619 for a replacement cost less depreciation for the major facility fee for sewer. That's a lot of numbers and a lot of talking. So I'll catch my breath and see if anyone has a question.
Thank you. And thank you for explaining that. The one thing that I took away from all of that is you do not want the existing customers to have to pay again, and that is so important to us. When was this, and I'm sorry, I might not have heard it. When did we last do an assessment on our major facility fees? Bobby, do you know that, or Kevin?
Mayor, I can't say that we have ever gone externally and done something externally to look at this. It was clearly brought to our attention as the town that we needed to look at this. It was clearly brought to our attention as the town that we needed to look at this. Um, by members of the development community. And so that's why we went out and we looked to the experts in the industry. And clearly Baker Tilly is someone who has done this throughout the country. Nick has, uh, done these studies throughout the United States and looked at, uh, an analysis for. Uh, many different municipalities, county governments, uh, utilities as a whole. And we felt very good about going out and, and keeping in, you know, an open understanding to, and an open mind. About, um, how we were to assess this. Nick has put a tremendous amount of work into this and worked with Kevin and I numerous times to. Uh, go back and verify the data as to where we should be. I think we all felt, uh, very good about the work that has been done here. But I would say the last time there was a major adjustment, and we've adjusted it. Numerous times in my 14 years with the town, but they have been mainly cost of living increases or, or. Uh, CPI, consumer price index increases, not anything that we've gone back and reassessed. As you know, I, I felt strongly several years ago that I wanted to, uh, that I thought the fee was too low. Um, and that we should increase the major facility fee. Because of all of the increases in cost associated with what we needed to increase the capacity of the system. Um, I, I just felt that this was a.
Much better approach by using, uh, someone who, uh, like Nick, who has done this throughout the country and who's much more experienced at it.
Absolutely. And the, the data supports that we are not doing this to, um, gouge. Our, our new, uh, residents on here. It is, um, it's something to cover our costs. So. I, I understand that. Um, and I thank you for that, Nick. Uh, does council have any questions at this point? Well, Nick is catching his breath. Go ahead, Councilman Jenkins.
Oh, thank you. And again, thank you Director Stahl and Nick for doing this. This is pretty comprehensive analysis and there are a lot of numbers. So it seems to be like, is it, is it the 2021 replacement cost less depreciation? Does that seem to be the best option? And then, um, does this calculation include maintenance costs or am I all faced by thinking about that?
The maintenance costs are paid from your sewer fees that your residents pay every month. I'm not sure what you're billing, but those aren't actually paid through as an operating expense. Typically, this is to capture the value of the asset that someone will benefit from. I think the other thing, and Bobby, thank you for the compliments. The other thing is, uh, as we walk through this, and my hope was that working with Bobby and Kevin, it's a system. And they have the Excel model, so they'll be able to maintain the system going forward if they choose to. I prefer they hire me, of course, you know, but I'm just. Was as we walked through this, we spent a lot of time talking about each aspect of why we were doing it. And what should be, excuse me, in and out. And my intent from the beginning was it was an education process so that the town could carry this on. Because you have a CIP that's estimated cost. And those costs will change as you learn more about the assets and what you're going to need to construct them. And so Kevin and Bobby should be able to go in and make the change and then say, our fee needs to be updated because our assets got more, cost more than we anticipated or less. And the key to is to be equitable and fair. You're just seeing, what we typically hear in our business, we growth should pay for growth. So when you look at less depreciation, the concept of the replacement cost is as an current customer. I've paid money for the acquisition of these assets, but I get nothing in return. If all we collect is my, my asset cost of what I paid for. The replacement cost gives the existing customers a return on their investment that they wouldn't otherwise. It's only 2.88% or 2.90, I forget the exact number. It's not a big return, but it is a return to them for the investment they've made in the system. Each city and town looks at it differently, and there's no one widely accepted method. Although I can generally tell you that replacement cost less depreciation. Tends to be the one that is chosen more often than the others. In your case, you have a short asset life on your depreciation cycle. So for instance, on your water and sewer lines is 35 years. Those pipes, some of the, in some cities we've worked with, they're in the ground for a hundred years. And so, you know, the, the depreciation cost that we've deducted from replacement is the actual depreciation expense you've booked against the asset. In a system where the life is more lined up with the actual asset life, if something's fully depreciated, you would take it completely out. It would not show up as a replacement cost. If we did that here, it'd be very small because you have, you know, the, the accounting life doesn't line up with the service life. And so that's where, you know, judgment and understanding how utilities operate, um, comes into play. And I feel very comfortable that, you know, the system we put together, working with Kevin and Bobby is fair and equitable.
So Director Stahl, is, is there going to be a recommendation from, from your perspective about what's? Which one to choose or which one that we should implement in the future?
Absolutely. Um, I, I believe very strongly that when we looked at what was best for La Plata. And what was the most equitable for our residents, we felt that it was replacement cost, uh, less depreciation. And so, um, when Kevin and I and Nick all put our heads together on this. I think, and I won't speak for Kevin, I'll let Kevin speak for himself in this situation, but I personally felt. That that was the methodology that I felt reflected the best for our residents here in La Plata.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other council questions? Councilwoman Bryant Ward.
Thank you. I don't want to belabor this, but can you explain to me why you thought that, um, the cost less depreciation was the best, um, option?
Are you asking that of me, Councilwoman Ward? I honestly felt that when we looked at, uh, and, and yes, it does take into account. It, it does give a little bit more of a return on investment to the existing customers, but a very small. I mean, we're, we're talking two, 2%, two and a half, 3% return on investment back. But the reality is for all of us, we are going to always have to take into account replacement cost. What we paid for an asset 10 years ago, 20 years ago, 30 years ago. To me, doesn't take into account what the value of that asset, even though it's been in the ground, the value of that asset. Is, is closer to the replacement cost because that's what we know it would cost if we had to put it new in the ground again today. So I've always thought that replacement cost, no different than your homeowner's insurance. When you, um, when you insure your home, uh, and it suddenly catches fire and burns down your insurance, you want to have replacement cost. In place so that you're actually replacing the asset that you have not being, it's not insured for what you paid for it. Maybe 10 or 20 years ago, it's, it's, it's insured for the replacement cost of such. So that's why, and, and you're taking into account the actual depreciation on this. We, we went through that. Nick took into account the actual depreciation that we have, uh, on our books. Uh, that was my personal feeling and I, I would, you know, ask Kevin and Nick why. Um, you know, and, and to be honest, I, I also took into account that. The, you know, the bulk of the other cities, counties, utilities that Nick has done. Uh, business with have chosen the same, uh, methodology.
I'm not sure if I, if I'm clear, Director Stahl. Director Green, um, Mr. Greenville, can you, um, give me the rationale for choosing that option? I'm, I'm not, I'm, I'm still not clear on our rationale for it.
Yeah, um, Councilwoman Bryant Ward, so the replacement cost less accumulated depreciation. Is, you know, one of the four methods that is, uh, recommended, um, by the, the governing body. And if you look at asset acquisition cost, um, that is just the original cost of the assets in the year it was constructed or acquired. So that really doesn't, it is an inequitable calculation because, you know, you're not accounting for that growth. And that's why we think replacement cost is a more sort of, uh, you know, equitable, fair way to do it. And your other option is original cost less accumulated depreciation. That's called the book value of the asset. And that's sort of a fair way than original cost, but it doesn't count for, you know, the investment that the early users are putting in the system. To earn something off, off of that. That's where replacement cost less accumulated depreciation, we thought was the most equitable way to do it.
And that makes sense.
Especially to the users who have already, uh, bought in.
Okay, I get that.
And I, and I think if I could just add, I think Nick, um, still had a couple more pages on his report.
Nick, have you taken your breath now?
Yeah, we went through, we went through the sewer in great detail. I would assume that the process for the water assets was exactly the same. Two are identical to each other. And in the end, we came up with the water asset value somewhat less because it's not, doesn't quite the amount of assets that the sewer did. But the water asset value on acquisitions, $1,719. And replacement cost less depreciation, 2,413. So the total value at acquisition is 12,592 for water and sewer. And $16,032 for replacement cost less depreciation. That's kind of the range where they are. The, the other point, Kevin, I want to add to the comment about replacement cost less depreciation is. You know, if you take the book value, there's all these assets that are in use that everyone benefits from, but since they're depreciated, they pay nothing for them. On the replacement cost, we have subtracted all the existing depreciation. So if you had a sewer line and you constructed for a million dollars and it was fully depreciated, depreciated, we subtracted that million from the replacement cost. So we tried to be as fair as we could to both the existing users and to the new users coming on. And I'd be glad to walk through all the line by line with the water if you'd like. It's just, um, the process is the same and it's just different numbers.
Thank you for that. Councilman Tullinger has a question.
Yes, this may sound, uh, elementary or maybe I missed the whole thing, but to a new resident. Just break it down, like what, what does this mean for them? I know they're going to be shouldering a buy-in cost, but what, what would that look like compared to somebody that's already part of this process? Is there a dollar figure we assign to that on a per user basis?
So actually the $16,032 that would be the major facility fee for water and sewer. Represents the cost of the assets that the new customer will benefit from. Um, and cost, and it represents the cost of the assets that the existing customers have already paid. So I'm an existing customer, I, whether I pay it through a connection fee or through my user fees as I went along. I paid my share of the asset cost for the services I'm receiving. And the new customers are being asked to pay their share of the asset cost they will benefit from.
Question, uh, Councilman Tullinger.
No, 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 thanks.
I, I, if I, and if I may, you know, I've actually been an elected mayor at one time, so I know when you're making these decisions, how difficult it can be and the questions you're going to get, going to get asked. I think, you know, I, I think what's key in here is that the. The equity that was built into this as we went along. So if there's a contributed asset, we did not, we're not asking new customers to pay for assets to sit, the town. Received for free from someone. Um, in many locations, that's a very big number and yours is not particularly a big number. We're asking them to take in out the existing principal portion of any outstanding debt because that's already, that's in the existing assets. We don't want them to have to pay twice for it. If we left it in, they would be paying for it two times. The interest cost that's so far been paid, been paid by your existing customers through their utility fees for the most part. And so that's why you're giving them this return on the replacement cost gives them something for their investment.
Is that clear?
Well, and I would, and I would further say, Mayor, that, uh, what Nick, uh, it was bringing up was the example was where Faison contributed the new well at well 11. The new water tower up at Rosewick Crossing. All of those assets weren't taken into account and we're not asking new customers to pay for those assets because they were contributed to us. By third-party, uh, developers in that situation. So those assets weren't taken into account in this formula. And so they're not going to be taken into account in the fee.
Thank you for that. Uh, Councilman Goldsmith.
Yeah, just with curiosity, do we know what the Charles County major facility fee is and how often they have changed it?
Councilman Goldsmith, I don't know what it is, but I do know they evaluate it on an annual basis as a part of their budget process.
And then part of this report that you're getting will allow you to do the same thing on an annual basis, will it not?
Yes, and instead of just adjusting it by the, uh, consumer price index, um, we're going to do, uh, this evaluation basically every year and just update the numbers. And that doesn't mean that we'll never engage Nick or another similar firm to do a review, um, every few years. But it will allow us the ability to do it in-house on an annual basis.
Well, there are. Oh, sorry, uh, Councilman Goldsmith, continue.
Now, it's basically this report is, is great in that it justifies whatever figure we come up with. And I think the analysis has been, uh, in-depth and easily justified to the citizens. So that's important.
And there's a question that always comes up when we have, um, a raise in fees, whatever it is. Is there ever an opportunity or a situation, I should say, that they would be lowered?
Well, I can tell you in my experience that sometimes if there's a development that's highly desirable by a community. They will waive all or a portion of some of these fees to pull that development in. And that's is an economic development decision. But the connection fees, um, major facilities have been a consideration for some of our clients. Because if you have a large, you know, user who's going to come in and maybe they're a hundred RDUs or EDUs, I'm sorry. We use RDUs in other towns, residential development is a hundred EDUs. And you really want them to come in town because of benefit, number of jobs, amount of money they would pay, the other tax base considerations. And you're competing for them with neighboring communities. You know, sometimes our clients have looked at and said, well, we will waive all or a portion of these. Fees as an economic development incentive pursuant to the development agreement, uh, with the potential industry. But that's a decision you can make at that time, but that's where I generally have seen the fees lowered. I have not seen them, um, lowered otherwise. But that's when I've seen them.
Thank you for that. Uh, council, any other questions? Brent, go ahead. Thank you, Bobby.
Sorry, I thought I had muted my.
Brent, you're muted.
Yeah, sorry. Thank you. I got to hear Bobby though, so that was all worth it.
I just wanted to build on what Nick was saying. I did work in a community where they looked at discount, uh, up to 50%. Uh, major facility fees for specific types of businesses. Now, it wasn't done for residential, but it was done for, let's say tourism-related businesses. There were certain parameters that had to be met along with, uh. Usually it was employment, based on employment, number of employees provided would allow for it. But I think the bigger question you were asking is based on, you know. Uh, assets or projects, would, is there a possibility that the fee would naturally go down on its own? Uh, depending on the capital costs that we may be looking, or the capital projects that we may be looking to, to do in the future.
Yes, and, and that's always just a question that we get. Um, because once we put a fee in place, um, there's always. Whether or not it will ever be lowered again, or is it just going to, that's a new starting point and we're going to raise it up again. So I just want to be prepared for any questions that we may encounter.
One way it would potentially go down when all of the existing debt is paid off. And that component would fall off and the fee could go down because the existing debt has been paid off. Current assets, we haven't too much about those. We have the outstanding debt, which is principal and interest. And when that outstanding debt is paid off, you no longer need to collect for it. Or as that debt gets paid down, you don't need to collect for it, um, in the future. And so. And so I think that was the key in my mind was working, you know, with Kevin and Bobby. So they understood the system as Kevin said, so they can maintain it going forward and keep it fair and equitable to current and future users as a, as a town moves through its course of development.
And, and I really love the fact that it will be now monitored, um, and assessed every year or looked at at least every year, uh, to see how it impacts. Because it has to be equitable, it really does. Um, anyone else? All right, Brent, so what is our next step? And thank you all so, so very much for this very comprehensive, um, look at our major facility fees. I kind of like, uh, yours, Nick. What do you call it? Whack and sack?
Whack and sack.
I, I kind of, that's kind of fun. But is there, what is our next step, Brent?
Uh, next step would be under legislation, uh, council considering amending the, uh, schedule of fees uh, to reflect the new number that the report provides.
Okay, so, um, we'll wait until we get to that point, I guess, since we've got the hub coming up. But, um, that way, well, you know what, Brent, can we do that now since we've got Nick on here? If we have any questions, I mean, they just did introductions, so. I guess I just covered that, so it was, uh, introduced to us. Is there? We've had the questions, so, um, I guess we're looking for a consensus to move it forward to next week's meeting.
And if you would like me to read the ordinance head, I can, header, I can, Mayor James.
Uh, yes, that would be, uh, that would be great.
All right, draft ordinance twenty-one dash thirty-seven for discussion and introduction and ordinance concerning FY twenty-two fee schedule for the purpose of repealing and adopting the fee schedule with amendments to correct certain fees that did not accurately cover actual expenses as adopted June eighth, twenty twenty-one, dealing with fees set by the town of La Plata and all matters generally relating thereto.
Okay, um, anything else from council? And I'm going to ask each of you if you're in favor of moving this forward to next week. So since this isn't an introduction, uh, Councilman, um, Goldsmith?
Yes, please move forward.
Councilman Challenger?
Yes, I'll probably have more questions next week. Thank you.
I love it. Councilwoman Bryant Ward?
Yes.
Councilman Jenkins?
Uh, yes, move forward. Thank you.
And I am in favor of moving this forward to next week for legislation. So thank you all for, um, bringing this up and giving us an opportunity to ask the questions. And I'm sure after we digest this a little bit more, Nick, we will have questions. Brent? Are you muted?
I'm struggling tonight. I just wanted to thank Mr. Dragasic for his report and, uh, his work with the town and also for teaching us how to fish as well as catching us a fish in this one.
I love that. Great, thank you very much. And we'll go on to the next, um, item on the agenda, which is the hub petition, petition for annexation.
Good evening, council. Um, Sue Greer on behalf of Hawthorne Rosewick Limited Partnership tonight on the hub at La Plata. You will recall that we were before you in September of this year to do an initial presentation and ask the town council for a consensus to move the hub to the planning commission so that the public input and process, um, could begin on the proposed annexation. At that time, I think council had not been able to, had not had an opportunity to digest the materials. And so we came back, uh, and asked us to come back again so that you would have an opportunity to do that. And we are prepared tonight to give you a short presentation. And at the end, again, we're going to ask if the council is satisfied for a consensus to move this on to the planning commission to begin the public process. And I just want to say that that means, um, simply that, that the council ultimately is the decision maker. This is the beginning, or that I would say in really actually somewhat of the middle of the process. We've been at this a long time. But you as the town council will have multiple opportunities to see, ask questions, assure that your concerns are answered, listen to your constituents and the input that they have on this proposal. I'm not going to, in deference to the time, and I know you all have, uh, your agenda has been quite weighty, I would say. So I'm not going to, I'm going to introduce the team. I'm not going to give the credentials that I presented at our last meeting. But with me tonight is Bill Murray, the project manager, a planner with a long history and tradition in the southern Maryland, um, area, particularly in Charles County. And he is a resident, uh, of the town of La Plata and has, uh, actually had many projects that have developed this good community that we live in. Jim Whitehead from ATCS, our engineer and also planner. And I think Jim has been with the hub since the inception of the project and has added great depth and experience, especially on the areas that you were just talking about, water and sewer. Seth Harry, our planner from Seth Harry and Associates, uh, which is based in western Maryland. But while he's based in western Maryland, he is recognized not just in the state of Maryland, but nationally and also has international projects. And when you hear his presentation, and I know you've heard it before, and many of you have been with this project for a long time, you know that the keys, the key to Seth Harry is principle-based planning. And that is the key to this development and the key to its success. But also with us on the phone, we have the pleasure of our, the general managing partner of Hawthorne Rosewick Limited Partnership, and that is the Tower Companies. I believe that I see Eric Posner and Mr. Abrinson on the, um, on the, on the, um, the list of individuals participating. And so I would like to again reiterate how pleased and honored we are to be working with Tower Companies on this important, um, project. And one of the things I said about Seth Harry was principle-based planning. And I think that encapsulates the Tower Companies. They are based in Washington DC. They are a third-generation company that develops, owns and manages properties throughout the United States. But the key and, and why I have been so pleased to be associated with this project is if you go to the Tower Companies, one of the things I think I told you before, when I look at a company, I always go to see, uh, does that company have a mission statement? What's driving that, that company? And the Tower Company's mission statement reaches out and grabs you because it says, we envision a world where the building inspires and enrich the lives of their occupants and creates positive social change. In this world, people seek out buildings that improve their health and wellbeing, connect them to thriving communities and help sustain the environment. And you can tell when you research the Tower Companies, that's not just something that they put on their website. They're committed to it. I believe if I, if I'm correct, over ninety-five percent of their properties are LEED certified. They've been recognized by the U.S. Green Building Council, the U.S. Department of Energy, the Environmental Protection Agency and the National Resource Defense Council for their leadership in this area of environmental sustainability. In two thousand nineteen, they initiated their inaugural corporate responsibility report. I, when I looked at that, they had two thousand hours of volunteer hours of their employees. They were recognized as one of the first multifamily buildings to receive a fit well, um, recognition. And I'm not going to go through because there's much more substance to them, but that shows that they are committed to their mission. And that is the type of quality project that they would like to bring to the town of La Plata in the hub. With that, the hub, as you know, has been, just as you can see in that mission statement, the thought and the work that went into that, the hub has been a project decades in the planning. Jay Hellman had a vision pre-COVID. None of us knew, and I think I said this last time, what virtual adjacency was. We all know what it is now and we can see the foresight that Mr. Hellman had in seeking out this property where the infrastructure and technology could come together to create a community truly where people are connected and can thrive. With that, I said I was not going to say, go on, and I found myself, of course, going on. So with that, what I would like to do is turn this over to Seth Harry to give you a presentation and an overview of the hub. Then we would be available for questions. And again, at the end of that, we are requesting a recommendation to move forward. Thank you so much. So with that, uh, I will, oh, I do want to footnote, I love the sidewalk idea, as you all probably know. Uh, I, I think it ties, by the way, very much into the way we see the hub and the connectivity to our community. So with that, Seth, I turn the floor over to you. Let me make sure, Seth. Seth, are you there? And I think Seth would like to take control to do the presentation.
Sorry, I was trying to, uh, share my screen and apparently that prevented me from unmuting. Um, would, I, I don't know if this is the town is, uh, has our PDF up there or whether or not, uh, I should go ahead and share my PowerPoint directly from my desktop.
I would go ahead and share Seth to make sure it's the most recent version.
Gotcha.
Because you had updated it slightly.
This is updated as of an hour before the meeting.
Understood, um. For some reason, it doesn't appear to be going, uh, sharing here.
Then, then Seth, the, the recent version is up. So, so if you want to start from the beginning and have them, uh, hit change slide, that would be.
That, that would be fine. Okay, well, good evening, uh, council, and, uh, thank you again for this opportunity to present, uh, our plan. The, um, as, uh, as Sue mentioned, this is a principle-based approach to planning. Uh, a little bit of history here, you'll go to slide two if we can get the full screen there. So there's essentially two, uh, models, uh, contemporary models of community planning and design. The first one is of course, uh, the pre-war model, which was, consisted primarily of discreet, self-sufficient, uh, uh, towns and villages and an otherwise rural landscape of, uh, productive agriculture and, and natural landscape. And in the post-war era with the advent of, uh, affordable personal transfer, transportation, uh, the value of the, uh, production of agriculture basically became competitive with new suburban development. Uh, and it, and it, and it developed, uh, in more of an ad hoc sprawling, single-use development based on large lot, uh, large lot parcels situated in otherwise rural poorly connected road network. The, it took, we've been building that model for about the last seventy years and we, uh, have become more familiar with the unanticipated consequences, both in terms of, uh, uh, fiscal quality of life, or most importantly, financial. I mean, uh, um, uh, environmental. And so we've gone back and revisited the principles, uh, that the, um, of the original pre-war model and, uh, and have honed those over the last twenty or thirty years. And we've now, uh, it's become a model development for new community planning and design. And that's the model that we've adopted for the hub. A next slide, please. Uh, this is a, a graphic of the hub located within the greater, uh, La Plata area. And we see it as a critical component in, in filling out the, the overall build-out of the community along with the College of Southern Maryland, downtown La Plata, uh, the Heritage Green Project and of course the three oh one corridor. Next slide. Okay, uh, based on traditional community planning principles, which are, which use less land for development, thereby preserving open space, natural systems and wildlife, allows for more market response of incremental development in the form of multi-generational neighborhoods, permits use of smaller-scale best practices, stormwater management strategies and provides greater access and connectivity to neighborhood-scale amenities for all residents, including walking and biking paths and access to nature. Next slide. So this is the, uh, basically a representation of the planning that those principles apply to the hub, uh, property. We looked at first the major, uh, uh, street connections to the existing arterial network and connected those through from, uh, Route two twenty-five to, uh, Route three oh one in the St. Charles Parkway. And of course, the College of Southern Maryland. Next slide. We then, um, identified, uh, the natural, uh, water systems and, uh, on the site, steep, steep slopes, et cetera, undevelopable areas. Next slide. And, uh, and identified the developmental areas that were remaining once we had allowed for all of those, uh, factors. And we overlaid on top of that a network of neighborhood structure. Next slide. Which is based on a quarter mile or five-minute walking radius. And that yielded, uh, three, uh, discreet neighborhoods, uh, again nestled within the natural topography of the, of the site and the surface hydrology of the existing creeks and water systems. Next slide. So we can kind of, um, abbreviate the traditional planning principles applied to the hub as compact, walkable and mixed use. Next slide. And they have, uh, significant, uh, environmental benefits that are relevant here to southern Maryland area. One of course is water quality. And we looked at, uh, a study that was produced by the, uh, Carolina Coastal Conservancy that, that compared, uh, natural, uh, case study of, uh, natural, uh, pre-development for a parcel, uh, in a similar, uh, environmental setting enforced for runoff sediment nitrogen phosphorus and chemical oxygen demand. And then they, we modeled a conventional sprawl development, which you could see had a significant impact on those environmental qualities. And then a, a, a new development based on traditional town planning principles. And you can see the dramatic, uh, improvement over all of these water quality issues and impacts. Next slide. And walkable, uh, is another key component, uh, again for, uh, mobility options for families to walk together. Those who are too young, too old, or otherwise unable to drive themselves. And of course, the environment that is supportive of that, which includes principles of complete streets, which, uh, we talked about a little bit earlier, uh, this evening with regard to, uh, crosswalks and creating a pleasing and engaging, uh, street environment for pedestrians. And then we also looked at the impacts of different road network types and associated land uses. And the, the, again, the post-war model tends to rely heavily on a course network of large arterials, big roads, uh, which of course has a familiar, uh, land use, uh, model that, that, uh, responds to that, to that particular approach. And then we also, and then we compared that with the finer-grain networks, typical of the, uh, well-connected interconnected, uh, traditional neighborhood developments and small roads, low, low design speeds and, uh, much enhanced walkability. And a combination of the two, uh, which is what we are looking at for the hub, which is, uh, again, slow-speed walkable neighborhood, uh, uh, street networks and then access to the larger regional, uh, networks outside of that neighborhood context. So looking more closely at the neighborhood structure, next slide. In this case, uh, neighborhood two, next slide. You'll see that the, uh, the neighborhood is depicted in three different colors and each one of those represents a specific zone within the neighborhood, the neighborhood center, neighborhood general and neighborhood edge condition. Each one has its own set of specific characteristics. Next slide. Uh, the neighborhood center is typically where, uh, the neighborhood amenities, parks, state cares, uh, things of that nature are located. It's usually where the higher-density, uh, unit housing types are to give them more convenient access to those amenities. Neighborhood general, uh, next slide. Is more general as the name would suggest, it has the greatest diversity of residential types uh, and usually the, the greatest amount of the area within the neighborhood as a whole. And again, uh, it, it still retains convenient access to, uh, those neighborhood amenities in the, in the neighborhood center area. Next slide. And neighborhood edge typically is the lowest density, largest lot units. And they often are on the periphery of the neighborhood and back to nature. And so, uh, collectively. And so collectively, you covered the neighborhoods, the three zones of neighborhoods, cover most of the housing needs and lifestyle preferences within any given market and provides easy access, again, both to neighborhood-scale amenities and to adjoining natural amenities as well. Next slide. In early 2020, we recognized that COVID was going to have a significant impact on the original vision for the hub from an employment point of view, which was as a remote work campus for federal office workers currently making commute up 301. And that the, it would, it would revolutionize how people work and relate to their jobs. And obviously, one being the remote work, work-from-home scenario. So we went back, we looked at other, how we might adapt our original vision to accommodate this in a way that minimized the impacts in terms of what we had anticipated from the benefits of a large remote work campus for the project. And we went back and actually looked at some of the historical precedents for this. And again, that sort of pre-war model where there, where industry was typically much more locally based. And next slide. And we compared that to our neighborhood one, which was based on the pre-COVID. And we used that as a comparison between the two so we could understand the implications of what what specific concepts and principles would be applied and how they would be applied differently in the pre-COVID and post-COVID models. Next slide. We, in the, in this one, we still had a significant potential, what we were considering sort of an incubator opportunity for, again, a remote work campus, more of the types of end-users that might occupy that component of the project in a more dedicated neighborhood focus. Some multifamily development, both centered around a large neighborhood green, which could provide a significant asset to the surrounding communities as well. Next slide. A number of smaller-scale neighborhood parks, pocket parks, distributed throughout the neighborhood. Next slide. And a neighborhood-specific community center. And next slide. And of course, access to the adjoining natural space that was preserved in the planning of the overall project. And next slide. So in looking back again at this component, we recognize that this, even in a post-COVID era, that the market is already adapting to that. There is there's, we're, it's looking like we're heading towards a hybrid outcome in terms of employment, where it will be what we're calling sort of both work-from-home supportive, but also the opportunity to, as people do begin to migrate back to the office, to revisit the idea of a remote work campus for federal office workers in the area. And we still feel like this is an opportunity that we could continue to pursue and market the project for. And we have the capacity and the ability to accommodate that should we, should the demands reemerge for that use. Next slide. And this is some of the initial planning that we did back in the early stages of the process, where we were focusing on the large remote work campus, some of the design concepts for that and based on a project that we worked on in Frederick, where my office is located, as a way, as a, with architecture that was both appealing to that end-user, but also reflective of the traditional architecture in the La Plata area. Next slide. And again, looking at the post-COVID trends, and clearly, remote work and work-from-home is going to be a major factor in all regional employment moving forward. And we think that we can position the hub to be a very attractive and appealing project to attract those types of end-users. Next slide. So we went through an internal process of exploring those options based on traditional planning models and current traditional neighborhood designs and how they accommodated the more localized employment opportunities. And based on that, next slide. We developed a new prototype model for the neighborhood two. And some of the, looked at some of the unit types and neighborhood-specific designs as consequence of that. Next slide. And again, these neighborhoods nestled in the natural habitat on the property. Next slide. Small neighborhood scale serving commercial. Next slide. And variety of different housing types, serving, you know, getting multi-generational needs within the community. And next slide. And again, this is the illustrative overview of the neighborhood two post-COVID. And one of the things we were looking at, it was also a trend as a consequence of COVID, was a greater interest in reliance on local food systems and locally sourced foods. And so we looked at, next slide, how we could potentially team with the college, Southern Maryland, and College Extension Program for Food Production Innovation Center, which we think would be a good fit for the project and the and the lifestyle and health focus of the tower companies and the community as a whole. Next slide. And we, you know, we asked ourselves the questions that we anticipated the community would want to ask, which is how do we know this model works? And we know it works because we have local precedence in the region, 200 years of continually adaptive relevance and viability and increased popularity in the current situation. So these are exactly the kinds of attributes and community features which have stood the test of time. And we believe is the model that is most appropriate for the hub moving forward. Next slide. And this model is 100% consistent with and compatible with the comprehensive plan and is consistent with the TX zoning ordinance, which we worked with the town, in fact, to develop based on the principles that we intended to employ in the design and implementation of the hub. And next slide. And we have the knowledge and expertise to code the development to make sure that it is built out based on these principles and to the highest quality standards. And that those standards and guidelines will remain intact for the life of the build-out of the project. And so that even if, you know, for any reason, we were no longer involved with the project, those codes and standards would continue to guide the development moving forward. And next slide. And it will be planned, the commercial component will be planned to complement, support La Plata's downtown businesses. We have a lot of experience working in similar small towns and communities and that are satellite to larger metro areas such as Beaufort, South Carolina, Black Mountain outside of Asheville, North Carolina. And we've done planning work with the Princess Foundation in the United Kingdom. And what we've learned in those studies and in that work is that by working in concert with the downtown businesses, we can build a stronger regional draw for Southern Maryland and for La Plata as a whole. And next slide. And then these are the exhibits that we prepared for the annexation application, which highlights all of the specific features and attributes of the project. Next slide. How it relates to the existing natural systems and existing conditions on the site. And next slide. And the master site development program matrix mix, which explains the development program for the project overall. And next slide. Our amenity framework for the overall site for all three neighborhoods. And next slide. And then a current update, illustrative overall master plan based on the post-COVID model for neighborhood two, which would be the model which we would apply to all three neighborhoods moving forward. And I think that is the, the end of that presentation.
So, so thank you very much, Seth. And we went, again, we went through this. If you recall, in September, we took a little more time to walk through the presentation. But because you had been through it before, we didn't want to, we wanted to, again, be respective of your time and the fact that you have your meetings late into the evening. But I think one of the purposes is really to ensure that the town council knows the thought and the effort that have gone into thinking about this project and thinking of planning for it and how it best fits in with the town of La Plata and complements and will enhance the town of La Plata, which again is a hallmark not just of Seth Harry and his planning principles, but of the tower companies. So with that, I would ask the council, if you have any questions for us, we're happy to answer them. And hopefully, you will give us a positive recommendation so that we can start the public process and start communicating with your citizens through that process.
Councilman Goldsmith, I see.
Run the meeting, you know, I mute myself one time and that's the last time I'm going to mute myself. All right. I even put up the one finger, like, hold on. All right. Um, excuse me where I was. I, Councilman Goldsmith?
Yes, thank you very much. Good presentation. I remember talking to Jay over 10 years ago when he initially started this whole concept. And there's been some changes from what he initially perceived of being to what it is now being proposed. At that particular point in time, he was talking very little residential, in fact, if any, but talking more like FBI satellite office, GSA down here. So it was all basically large office buildings that would be taking place. Now it seems like we've gone from that to where your home is your office and therefore you're still accomplishing the same thing. I guess the key question then becomes, is there enough of that that would be available so that we can work in our local area and not have to commute up 301?
And I'm going to let both Seth and Bill speak to that. I think one of the things that they will say is, again, I think even before COVID, the plan that we presented, I want to say maybe it was at a December meeting to the town, was even different than the plan you see today. So a lot of thought has gone into the post-COVID world and what the market is. And one of the things that I think Seth will say is that's one of the beauties of this plan, that it can accommodate both and can adapt to both, that it has flexibility and adaptability. And in working with your town staff, they have been very cognizant and in tune to the need to have that type of flexibility in these annexations and have really been keeping us on task with respect to the draft annexation agreement that will ultimately come to the town to ensure that the agreement has the flexibility to adapt to changing circumstances and markets. So with that, Seth or Bill, which one of you would like to, I'm going to, I guess, turn it over to Seth first?
Well, I can probably answer a good bit of it because I was around when the old plan was done with the 5 million square foot of strictly office. And Mr. Goldsmith is completely correct. All the studies were done without any residential, very little residential unless it was above a commercial space. It didn't work, okay? To bring an entire satellite office down here from the federal government to occupy 5 million square feet is almost impossible. We do know that we have a lot of people commuting north every day, day for work. But COVID has changed that now, where a lot of, I think 70% of our residents are now telecommuting, at least temporarily. And a lot of us is going to stay. So what this plan is doing, Mr. Goldsmith, it's still trying to keep the money in La Plata. Whether you're sitting behind a desk and working in an office or sitting in your home and working, you're still going to spend your dollars in La Plata. You're here all day. Okay? The other thing is, one of Jay's visions was that made this property so good for telecommuting or telecommunity was all the fiber-optic lines across it. There's four major pipes coming across that are carried data. And that is going to be big in the future, being able to have all that broadband. We still have in our master plan where we can accommodate almost a million square foot of remote office, where people can either work at home or they can work in office at the hub. I personally have met with an intelligence agent three different times, okay? They're a little interested, but they're not going to bring down, if you look at it like a high school, they're not going to bring the whole school. They're just going to bring a classroom, okay? Maybe 100, 200 people. But the original idea behind the hub was to commute in reverse, say, from Welcome or Newburgh or Waldorf to La Plata to work instead of commuting into DC. We think we're still going to get some of that. It's a little harder market right now, office space. It's quite a bit of it on the market in the DC area right now. But the idea behind the hub is rather, if you work from home, you better be nice, you know, you're going to wake up somewhere every morning. So you might as well wake up in a very nice place and a nice community to work from. And we're trying to develop that with the hub. We're trying to put some of the services in the hub itself to also cut down on commute outside of your neighborhood, where you can get a little coffee in the morning or possibly you work from home. You can get a printer cartridge for your computer without having to go out on 301. So it'd be very limited commercial. We're not trying to compete with downtown. We want to enhance downtown by bringing more people here to shop in downtown. But the market has changed significantly from 30 years ago when Jay had the vision of bringing 5 million square foot office building here. This is a resilient plan. And if if the market changes, we would love to build more office. Right now, we need to anchor it with some rooftops and some houses to drive that office market. I don't know if I'm answering your question or not. I'm not trying to dance around it, but everything's market-driven. And we just want to have a great place for people to wake up every morning. Jim or Seth, you want to add anything?
Well, I think that, you know, again, the principles upon which we've planned the hub have already proven themselves to be extremely resilient and adaptive. And so I think when we combine that with the modern technology of internet communications, access, the amount of broadband capacity that we have here, I think we actually really have, it's almost like a Back to the Future. We have a community that is ideally poised to move forward in a post-COVID era and to be flexible and adaptable to whatever, you know, that's coming down the road. At the same time, I think it helps to strengthen La Plata's position in the marketplace because it's offering something that right now is still very much an unfolding and changing, you know, product. And we're, we really came in with that in mind, with a project that we think is adaptable and resilient and sustainable. So in some respects, it ended up just, it ended up sort of really being exactly what the market is looking for right now. And we think that it could really help us to not only be attractive as a place to live, but a place to work and to bring all those consumer dollars back into the community or retain them in the community. So we're, we think it's a good fit for the world we live in today.
Let me add one more, one more thing, Seth, possibly. Mr. Goldsmith, when we, right before COVID hit, we had more density with a lot of apartment-type units that were elevator-dependent. We've taken a lot of that out of this post-COVID plan. We're not real sure people enjoy being in elevators that close anymore. So we've re-looked at our unit types for more diversity, too, more single-family, some bigger units where people can actually have a Zoom room and they can work from home. Instead of both the husband and wife working on a dining room table, they might have enough space for a little office for themselves. We're trying to, trying to encourage, you know, a connected community. So.
Bill, could you remind us how many homes that you now have on that? And then I'm gonna go to Councilwoman Bryant Ward.
Okay, again, that's, a lot of it is driven by the zoning, TDX, okay? And we've done a high and low because we don't know how everything's gonna work out specifically. We're looking at a low of 1,594, 1,600 and a high of possibly 2,100 units.
And just if I could, Bill, how, but the build out, you know, because that always when people hear numbers, I want, you know, any citizens listening, how long is that build out? That that those houses just don't pop up tomorrow. They're phased over time, correct?
Yeah, I wish I was a fortune teller. It's probably at least 20 years to build this up.
All right, Councilwoman Bryant Ward.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So generally, when you see the illustrations, they are somewhat reflective of what the community would look like. I'm looking at the last slide where it says town council annexation work session. And I'm looking at those buildings that look massive. Is, are those buildings in this illustration reflective of what you thought the the community would look like?
Those are two to three story buildings. It's a little hard to tell from the picture, but those are essentially like townhouses.
Okay, but that big, there's a big square building that looks like a armory of some sort. When you look at that, so I just wanted to make sure because that does not reflect the definition and how you describe the community in the center, and I think there were three different areas. And so none of those buildings look like they would fit into the description of the three areas that you rec.
I believe you, I I believe you may have been referring to one of the early renderings of our neighborhood one, which was pre-COVID, and that that is, that is correct. That was the original program where we were looking at more multifamily, as 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 Bill Murray had mentioned. But also, we, we were allowing for the possibility of a larger office end user. So two of those buildings were actually office buildings. And that was consistent with the original vision for the hub that, that that Jay originally had, Jay Hellman originally had for the project is a remote work campus for local federal workers. So the, I think what in the post-COVID model, we're going now to much smaller building types, both, both on the residential side and on the employment side. So it's now looking much more like a more of a traditional small town in Maryland, much like what the pictures you saw and the renderings you saw. So what you're seeing really is the evolution of the project over the last 10 years as a consequence of changes in the marketplace. And I think a real, as Bill was saying, a reevaluation of what is realistically achievable in that regard on the employment side. And then also obviously trying to take advantage of the flexibility of the, of the traditional planning principles to develop a post-COVID community plan that would allow for both working and living in a very high quality, walkable, attractive, multi-generational neighborhood.
Okay, I I just think that when you do this presentation, because I'm visual and I'm looking, I'm like, that doesn't match. That's not aligning with what you're saying. So I would think that maybe the renderings need to be reflective of what you are proposing. And I know that is changing, I get it, but still yet, when you see that, that that makes it look contradictory to what you're proposing. That's just one thing. Then I'd love the, I I have, you know, practices in this area. And I would love to see 70% of the folk not commute outside of the area. And if that's possible, who is going to seek out the end users for the remote work? You know, that.
We have people on the team and and I notice if you want to speak to that, but that is an ongoing process that we've been, and we're still doing that, we're still actively marketing the project for that end user.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, let me add one thing Seth. We just finished a brand new website. We're not publishing it yet because, you know, we're not annexed in and ready. But we just spent close to $100,000 on a website specifically targeted towards federal government and end users. Where we're marketing, but right now, we need to get annexed so we have something to really market. It's, you know, they keep asking us, well, when's it gonna be? When's it gonna come? When are you gonna get approval? When are you gonna break ground? So we need to get some predictability in the system so we can market.
I completely understand that. Again, I would just ask that, so that your proposal doesn't look contradictory to what you're saying, that the renderings are consistent because folk will take things out of context and make a mess out of it. So.
Yes, ma'am.
And Councilman Bryant Ward, you're exactly right because, and and we'll take a look at that because a citizen will say that did not, that that doesn't look like the picture that you showed us. And and so we'll go ahead and take, that's an excellent comment. We'll go ahead and take a look at that.
Okay, also Sue, you can correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe our annexation agreement spells out that we will do design guidelines for it within 120 days.
That that is correct. So the annexation, when we talk about the town council and the town having additional input, the annexation agreement calls for us to do a utility master plan that has to be reviewed and approved by the town. A design guidelines that have to be reviewed and approved. Covenants, there are everything from the master covenants down to the covenants that you see in each neighborhood that have to be reviewed and approved by the town. And I don't know if I said this, so if I did and I'm repeating, repeating myself, I apologize, maybe too much coffee. Transportation plan, so landscaping signage plan. So the town, it, when you annex the property, really what annexation does is it brings you, it brings us into the corporate, into the corporate boundaries, establishes the fact that we have to show, you know, that we're sustainable to the town, addresses utilities, but really what it also does is it, it designates the zoning for the property. As we move forward, the agreement calls for us to go through a multiple planning steps that will have not, that will have town input, town review and approval, all kinds of layers. It, we, we don't get to, you know, just move forward immediately. You, you all hold us to a pretty strict standard to make sure that the community develops in the way that the town wants to see it develop for its citizens and that you are able to maintain your fiduciary responsibilities to your citizens.
And I, I completely get that Sue, so thank you for saying it. But I, but again, when we make the decision to allow the annexation, I want to make sure that what I'm seeing today is not gonna be something different once you start the process, that you presented a master site development plan, I get it. And so I would like to think that it's going to look very similar.
Yes.
I think we hear you 100%. And again, I, I, I appreciate what you're saying because I've been in meetings where citizens have stood up and said, you misled us. This is what you said, this is what you gave us, and they pull up a rent, an artistic rendering and say, it doesn't look like this. And then it it causes an issue for the project and frankly, it causes an issue for the elected officials that approve the project. So I I 100% agree and we're gonna go back and take a look at that.
And Sue, if I, if I could, just Councilwoman Bryant Ward, this presentation, by the way, I was having trouble uploading the PowerPoint that, that we had intended to give tonight. This is actually the PowerPoint from Sept- September. And this was when we were transitioning through from the, the pre-COVID model to the post-COVID model. And we wanted to explain the differences between those two. So that the buildings that you saw and were commenting on were the pre-COVID model and the renderings that you, the other renderings that you saw were the post-COVID and the rendering that's on the slide visible right now. So this is, this is again, a work in progress. We believe that the, yeah, so the, the, thank you. These, this, these, these renderings right here, yeah, this is more the, the, you know, again, the scale, what we're talking about. This is the smaller, more village scale, small town scale of development that we're envisioning for the post-COVID. What you were looking at before was our original plan concept based again on the remote work campus. So this is evolving, but the renderings that you're looking at here is what the, the community would feel like actually on the ground. And we will continue to develop these and present them as we're moving through the site plan approval process so that you have exactly what we intend to build. And and if you look at the, the, the other projects that we've done with our design guidelines and and you'll see that there's a, a direct connection between what we propose, how we code for that and what actually gets built.
I understand, Mr. Harry, but again, you're bringing this to us tonight to ask for advancement. And I can only look at what I'm seeing in front of me and I just want to be clear on what I'm seeing if I'm going to make a recommendation. Not being difficult, I just want to, you know, be fair. I don't want to say, well, that's, that's not what I saw when I made the recommendation because nobody wants to hear that. So we have to do our due diligence and make a fair recommendation to move forward based upon what's in front of us.
Yes, ma'am, of course.
Okay, let me bring something into it Seth. I believe the last six slides, they used to be 56 through 61. That's actually what we're submitting for annexation, correct? All the rest of this was just backup material.
Well, that was, that was the transition as we're, as we're, as we were going from the pre-COVID to the post-COVID. So yes, that is correct, the the latter slide.
If you go to the last four or five slides, that's actually our official submittal.
Correct.
Okay, starting there, I believe. Because you had to do for submit, we had to do a soils map and things of that nature. Then greenways and, and then the analysis and then the neighborhoods. So for annexation, it's pretty simple. I mean, what what you show is not much, I mean.
Well, it, but and I just wanna, I don't wanna, I think we're, I I hear, I think we hear Councilman Bryant Ward's concern. And what she's advising us is good advice because we have several presentations. We're gonna be going in front of the planning commission. We're gonna be talking to the community that we need to ensure that whatever we present is reflective of what we're building. And and that is exactly, you've got a good team here and that's exactly what we're gonna do.
Hey, thank you, Councilman Challenger.
Okay, I don't want to jump in front of Councilman Jenkins.
I couldn't, I couldn't remember, but I thought Sue would keep me straight on that. Sue, sorry.
You were first. Okay, all right. So actually, it it's funny, we had that, that long discussion on that because I similarly went to some of the earlier graphics and I said, okay, I see the pocket parks you're talking about. That's great, but I see lots of what it looks like pools. Or at least, you know, they're blue rectangles on, you know, in these map sites. Like for example, the slide, I guess it's page 60 of our agenda packet. But multiple ones, it's kind of the same graphic where it talks about resident access to local nature trails will be suitable at the end of each neighborhood street. And then there's a hub development team slide and so forth, where it looks like parks, playgrounds provide safe and convenient access and amenities. It looks like, I guess I should just take it as that's aesthetically pleasing when presenting is to have different colors, not necessarily there'll be multiple pools in each neighborhood or any pools for that matter. Is that a safe assumption based on the recent discussion? Or is that part of the project plan is to actually have community pools within this, this hub?
Are you talking about this?
No, further up.
Okay, I think, I think I know the image that you are.
It's like an aerial view, yeah, like there, yep.
That, that is correct. That, that is a neighborhood community center to the left. And then the pools are with the multifamily buildings. That's what's represented there graphically.
But is that part of what we're talking about as far as having amenities within the various neighborhoods of the hub? And I think I'm saying that correctly because the hub is neighborhoods as a collective, right? And so in these neighborhoods, they would have their own access because some of the concern, of course, by residents as well as us would be, okay, not only just traffic in schools, but we don't have very many pools in La Plata any longer, especially with the fact that CSM filled theirs, right? And so resources like that with this many units can be a problem, even if it's over a 20 year period. So, you know, I saw that, I said, oh, that's great. That would be a big draw for that community, not just working from home, but having those amenities within it, even within the own, their own neighborhood, not just the hub in general. So is that, I mean, could you tell me a little bit more about that as far as the amenities go to be sustaining?
So at each, and I'll, and again, I'll let Bill and, and I'll let Seth speak to that. But one of the things that as we, that we have to develop as well is a recreational plan that is called for in the annexation agreement. We would be putting together a recreational plan for approval by the town. And typically the way that happens is, and correct me if I'm wrong, Bill and Seth, that as we develop the various neighborhoods, the recreational amenities associated with those neighborhoods are presented as well. Is that correct?
That is correct. In, in, in the, in the interpretation of that, of that graphic is also correct. Those are neighborhood pools as part of our recreational amenity package. And so each neighborhood will have a community center with its own pool. And in this particular, and 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 local parks and neighborhood serving retail amenities, things like playgrounds and that type of thing. So that is, that is a correct interpretation of the graphic shown. In this particular case, though, we do have two buildings which would have their own pool as well illustrated. And that would be part of that recreation plan.
I have an, I have another question, but I just want to comment on that. Just growing up, and this is, this is surely an aside from what we're supposed to be doing. But just growing up with a swimming background and in and doing various coaching throughout my life, that is a big help to our community is to have athletic activities like that that can bring neighborhoods together throughout our community. And and I think that would be a tremendous asset to our town is, you know, having accessible recreational activities that bring in different neighborhoods together. You have swim meets and you compete with folks in, in Waldorf and even maybe secondary's and et cetera. We have a very small swimming community that should be bustling and should be a community driver, bringing all of us together. And I think this would be great to have that. But the second part of my question was, it seems like, and what I like about this project is that even though it's a large amount of land, I think I, I tried to blow it up on my monitor that's behind my, my iPad here. It's like three, 396 acres or 296 acres total. But the footprint itself is much smaller than that as far as the buildings, right? And so part of this whole goal of the compact neighborhoods is to allow for a preservation of that natural environment. Can you speak to a little bit as to what the actual plans? And I, I'm sorry because I think it's in here in the master site development plan program matrix. But on my computer, I just can't make out some of the numbers. But the actual use, the actual buildable amount of acreage compared to the 296.
Bill, do you have that information on your computer? I don't have it on this.
112.
112, okay. So the.
Right, right now, the waste program, we've got pretty good detailed topo here. We've actually have designed the entire spine road coming through and had that permitted and everything. So right now, I was looking at about 112 acres. We're gonna maintain, gonna keep over half, over 50% will be in natural.
Okay, and I, I'll just leave it at, you know, I would look forward to hearing what the community would hear about the plans and the process, but I think it's really important that any new development that comes into town, right? Because we only have so much land, we only have so much, you know, natural resources available to us as a small, that they take that into account. And I appreciate that as far as your plan. So thanks for your presentation, I appreciate it.
One, one neat thing about the slide that's up there now, neighborhood one, that big green area, the, the pocket park, if you come in the main entrance into our community, that's very valuable ground. We're not putting a McDonald's there or a fast food or anything. We're keeping that. We're keeping that as park space where all the merchants could use it and all the residents could use it. And anyone coming there to do a little bit of shopping possibly could use it. So, uh, it's unusual, a developer takes their, probably their prime ground and make it into a park, but that's what we're doing.
Okay, Councilman Jenkins.
Thank you. Um, and thanks again for the presentation. Uh, several of my questions I had written down have already been answered. Specifically, the amount of open space, uh, the, the unit ranges and then the proposed billing, uh, built out, build out. And I understand that's market driven. I do have some additional questions, um, particularly on slide, I guess this is page thirty-eight. Uh, where you re- refer to, uh, to complement and support La, La Plata's downtown businesses. I, I, I'm, I'm curious about that because, and I certainly understand the planning principle of having, uh, neighborhood-type community and office space within neighborhoods. And I'm sure I don't have to tell Mr., uh, Seth this, but this is the new thing in planning now, the fifteen-minute city and the fifteen-minute neighborhood. So that, that appeals to me, uh, but I just have a, a, I guess a concern per se about that slide. And, and so in general terms, is there any consideration of how you would complement and support La Plata businesses? I mean, I have a, a sense of it, but I would maybe prefer, not at this time, but maybe just a short explanation how you want to handle that.
Sure. Well, there's a, there's a couple of ways we can, we can do that. One is that we work with the Downtown Merchants Association to make sure that we are, uh, our tenant mix within the project, which is again, the focus is really on neighborhood-serving commercial. It's essentially a convenience commercial. So when you look at the, the total consumer market for consumer goods, uh, uh, commercial, uh, convenience, uh, retail is a very, very small percentage of that total consumer dollar spending. So that, those consumer dollars will still be, uh, uh, patronizing other businesses in greater La Plata. And some of that will obviously go towards, uh, providing additional support for the businesses in the downtown. Because we're going to be adding, obviously, each household is going to be additional consumers to the market as a whole. So that's one of the ways that we do that. The other way is, um, uh, unfortunately, I said, we didn't have the, the PowerPoint that I wanted to show. But we talked a little bit about the project that we did in North Carolina in Black Mountain. Black Mountain has a small downtown, a very charming, very similar to La Plata's. And we were on the fringe of that, uh, downtown and we had, again, neighborhood-serving commercial. And, uh, we, we have not impacted downtown of Black Mountain at all. In fact, Black Mountain is doing much better because of the commercial that we have. It actually helps support Black Mountain as a, as a regional destination in western North Carolina. And now Black Mountain is a regular day trip destination for visitors to, uh, to Asheville because of the collective, uh, uh, businesses in both downtown Black Mountain and our project. So it is possible to add additional businesses in a way that brings more consumers to the area. And plus, in, in addition to that, obviously, the people who will be living in the hub will bring additional consumer dollars themselves. So it's something that you can, you can manage, uh, very effectively if you approach it from that kind of a comprehensive collaborative approach. And we have a significant amount of experience doing exactly that with communities like, uh, Beaufort, South Carolina, Black Mountain, North Carolina, et cetera, which are very similar in size and focus, uh, to what, uh, La Plata is, is trying to do right now with their downtown.
I think, thank you. And I seem to recall, uh, uh, I, I, I may have stumbled on that town website in, or that project. Did the tower companies, were, were they involved in that project as well? I, I'm trying to remember that.
That was a small independent developer in, in, in Black Mountain. The tower companies that, that, though are, or, and we could certainly let, uh, let Eric speak to that. But they're doing similar types of projects within the greater suburban Washington metro area, uh, based on similar principles.
Okay, and then I just have two, two, I guess, down in the weeds questions. Um, was there any consideration or will there be any consideration if needed for a potential school site? I know, I, I know you have to work that with Board of Education, but.
We are, we, we are and have been showing a school site on the master plan from day one.
Okay, and how, 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 how approximately large is that or do you know yet?
Uh, Bill, do you want to speak to that question?
Yeah, uh, Dave, as you know, uh, the Board of Education is always looking for forty or eighty acres.
Okay, that's correct. Yep.
Okay, um, our project, we don't have forty or eighty acres of flat ground to give them, okay? We're looking more for, you know, like a private-type school, which has become a very, um, in vogue here these days. So we're not looking at giving land to the Board of Education. We're looking at making our project supportive if, um, a private-type school would like to go in there.
And, and then just one final question. I think Mr. Murray or somebody mentioned earlier, you, you've designed the road. And obviously that's in, that crosses the Port Tobacco Creek or River, uh, that's, that's in the watershed. And I know at one time, because I've been here long enough to remember this, which is probably not good. But I do remember at one time there was a, um, Maryland Department of Environment Wetlands Crossing Permit. So is that still valid and have the conditions or has the criteria changed for obtaining or maintaining that crossing permit?
Okay, we did obtain both the MDE and the Army Corps permits for that road, for all the crossings and the wetland crossings. Um, I believe those are going to expire early or mid-two thousand twenty-two, okay? We've, uh, it's, we have, um, extended them a couple of times already, okay? Talking to our wetlands guy, he feels it would be just as easy to re-get them and let them expire considering we're not going to break ground within, you know, probably eighteen months. But they, we're all permitted at one time and we believe we have no problem getting them back. We did all the bug studies, wetland studies, uh, they would spend about a million bucks there. You know how it goes, right?
Bill, if, if I could, uh, comment on that, we also have a stream restoration plan approved, which mitigates the very minimal impacts we had to wetland buffers. So we, we really worked very hard not to impact wetlands. And as Bill indicates, this is a permit that would be easy to re-establish.
And then I would just close. And again, I, I don't want to beat a dead horse, uh, per se, but my own perspective and being around a long time and knowing about this project for a long time. I, I, I would again, just would un- underscore the previous comments from, uh, Councilmember Bryant Ward that there are so many versions of this plan floating around that it's going to get very easy for people not to understand which, which, which is tails and which is head. So I would certainly urge you, and again, I'm not trying to tell you how you do your, do your work, but certainly would urge you to make perfectly clear, this is the latest and greatest version. And, and of course, plans change, but be certain to, to really, uh, notate the changes and the dates as of a date. It, it, because I know how this can get really, because I'm confused now because there's so many different versions of this thing floating around. So, but I appreciate the opportunity to talk and I appreciate your time tonight in presenting us. Thank you.
And, um, Councilman Jenkins, I just wanted to tag on to one of the questions that you asked about downtown. As part of our, um, annexation agreement, we have also proffered the potential to offer services, the professional services, um, at our cost. Uh, of course, there's a cap on that. It's not unlimited, um, of Seth, um, in working with the town because he has specific expertise, as does Jim and Bill, um, in the redevelopment of your downtown and how to make that complement. And I, I had the pleasure, uh, uh, much to my husband's chagrin, but then he was happy I did it. Uh, we were in the area of Asheville and I drove to Black Mountain and got to see the town and got to see the development and how well they complemented each other. It was really, if you have an opportunity to go see it, especially with your planning background, to see how it is in action. It was just, I, I can't speak, say enough about how impressed I was.
Let, let me put a plug in for Seth real quick about retail and downtown. There's a new book out by Andrus Dwaney. I guess Dave knows Andrus quite well. Uh, Seth wrote the chapter on retail in this book. So I'll give you a copy. Seth is supposed to be the retail expert that all the planners go to.
Well,
One of them, okay? I know you won't toot your own horn. I tried to for you.
Okay, Sue, am I okay to talk now?
Thank you, Mayor James. I see the floor.
Thank you. Um, so a, a lot of fantastic information tonight. I've got a question, Bill, um, since you have been since inception. Is Jay anymore, uh, is he associated with one of the principals anymore? I know that I've read all of his articles on there and his idea. Is he still involved in this project?
Yes, Jay is involved in the project. Uh, unfortunately, he stepped aside from a day-to-day leadership role because of his wife's health and everything. He has moved down to Key West, okay? I talked, I talked to Jay quite a bit, okay? Uh, he's still involved and we're still trying to clear out his vision.
So he's involved, but he's not one of the principals?
The principal is a tower company and they've been one of the principals, uh, from day one.
So one of the, the, um, uh, concerns was that, uh, some of the, the vision back thirty years ago has changed a lot and the principals have changed. And, and that's not a bad thing because COVID has taught us that we have to, in the famous word pivot, we have to pivot in order to succeed. So, um, I, I, I thank you for that. I, I like the fact that, you know, something like a Wegmans or Harris Teeter, they are not interested in coming into the town of La Plata because we do have seventy percent of our government workers that are pre-COVID, that were commuting. Um, with bringing it to us, you know, people working out of their subdivision then, or their development, that may attract some of the, uh, larger grocery stores or, or retailers that weren't interested in before because they do have the people that are staying home that will shop during the day instead of making it a bedroom community. Um, I echo and hear what Councilwoman Bryant Ward has said and Councilman Jenkins. And Sue, you know, um, that we are always under a microscope. And I am, I, I absolutely hate delaying anything and pushing it back. But for, I am going to propose and, and obviously I can be overruled very easily that we get a clean packet so that we can say move forward with this. Uh, because with what we were presented today, uh, as Councilman Jenkins said, he's a little confused. And, and, uh, um, Councilwoman Bryant Ward said, we need to, you know, to show the numbers. So as much as I would love to say move it forward, um, we've got to have a clean package that says, okay, this is the one that's signed, sealed, delivered with the could pivot, but everything is in order. Does that make sense?
Sue, don't we have a clean packet in there for the annexation?
I, I think, I just want to be careful. This is a, the presentation and the way I took the comments. So the packet that we submitted and the, I think all the attachments were on your, um, board docs last time was the annexation petition and all of the backup to that, all of the exhibits. To my knowledge, none of that would change. I think what I heard is be careful about how our presentation and, and ensure that the presentation, there were some concerns about some of the visuals in the presentations, which we'll be happy to clean up. I'm, I would just, um, not want to see that because I think that, that the substance is in all those documents that, uh, we submitted to the town and which are before the town that we hear the admonishment of the town to make sure as we go forward to the Planning Commission and public process to make sure that the visuals in this presentation match exactly what's in that, with, with, what's in those packets. And, um, I would, just I understand your concern, Mayor James. I just, uh, wouldn't want to see that hold up the process. We'd be coming back simply and presenting to you a presentation with different, you know, visual, maybe cleaning up some of the visuals to ensure that they're the most up to date. So I, 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 my hope is that we could still move forward.
Janine, uh, Director Harrington has raised her hand.
Yes, I just wanted to, um, step in and say that moving forward tonight isn't, um, you know, going to cause any problems. The staff has the amended annexation petition. There are many meetings that still need to take place, um, between the Planning Commission and the Town Council. Um, and that includes going through the annexation petition in detail, um, to include any amendments or, um, conditions of that, uh, annexation petition before we write the resolution for that. So, um, you know, obviously this is, uh, the council's decision as a whole on whether or not to proceed forward. But merely the next steps would just be to go to the Planning Commission for a work session to discuss the TDX zoning proposal. Um, and at that, at that point, I would recommend that they have their graphics updated. Um, and we could possibly do a, a work session just to show you the updated, uh, graphics as well. But I, I don't think it'll hurt anything to proceed forward, um, as we have many work sessions and meetings that are, are planned ahead for this.
And we'll actually get a chance to, um, make suggestions for proffering. Will, will we, uh, the council will be able to do that? Good.
Oh, you're going to have a lot of, you get, you have a lot of say. You, you, you are, you know, I, I, everyone always, I always say, and I, and I don't mean it. I always say, you know, the government is the king and the queen. You all have the sovereignty and you, you have a great deal of control over our project and our approvals. So absolutely, we want to hear your input. Um, as we go through the hearing process, we're, we're listening to the citizens, but we also know that you're listening to the citizens and that you may have additional requests or requirement based on what you hear from public input. And we fully anticipate that and look forward to that conversation.
Thank you. Uh, Councilman Goldsmith.
Yes, uh, as far as your concern about the graphics, and that's really all I think we're talking about here and how it looks and comes across to the viewer. Uh, as far as the formal application, I'm looking at it, starting on slide thirty-eight, uh, thirty-nine really. And that's going to stay the same no matter what graphics you change. That is the formal presentation. So I don't have any heartburn in saying, okay, let's start the process. And that's all we're doing is starting the process.
Thank you for that. Councilwoman Bryant Ward.
Okay, so just, so I'm clear. Um, we're starting, what you're asking us to bless, to move to the Planning Commission. It starts on page thirty-eight. Down to page.
Well, if, if I could, if I could be so bold, it, it, it's that, but it's also Councilman Bryant Ward. Also, uh, there's a whole package of materials. And again, they, I think those materials all showed up on your September agenda. Um, so it's a whole packet of materials and those materials as a package, which the, which those slides that they were about to go to are a part of. But there is, um, a very detailed package that the town has in front of it.
Right, but I could, but again, and I do have heartburn. I'm sorry, Councilman Goldsmith. I want to know what it is I'm blessing, you know, I do have heartburn. If, what it is, I understand that, that we move forward because it fits the TDX zone. I understand that piece. But when you start talking about what the residents look like, he talked about the streets. He talked about, you know, the in, the center, the whatever, the middle area communities, the outer communities. You talked about all of those things. All of that is a part of my decision. And so I need to understand what it is I'm blessing. Um, so if I'm blessing, starting on thirty-eight down to forty-three, fine. If I'm, I get the whole package. I remember seeing that, but I'm, I heard several times that things that were presented in September have since changed. And so I don't want to look at September. I want to look at what it is that you're asking me to say yes to tonight. So that I'm clear, so that nobody comes back to me and say, you were hoodwinked. That's not what, that's not what they told you because we've heard it. I'm, I, we've heard it and I want to be clear. What am I blessing?
So Councilman Bryant Ward, you are correct. Those, those, um, and I don't have, Seth, you're going to have to do the numbers for me because, um, I don't have the presentation. I can, I see it very small. But if you scroll up, I think I'm looking at the, um, can you go up a s- one slide? Seth, can you point out, so?
I, I don't have any control over this, unfortunately, the, the, what's on the screen.
Okay, but if we, if we look at these slides, so, and I, like, you know what, now I'm pointing at the, the, my, my screen and you all can't see what I'm pointing at. Uh, so if you go up one more slide, more slide, one more slide. Okay, good. One more slide. Okay, one more slide. Okay. Is this not where it starts, Seth?
That is correct.
Development plan.
Correct. And that has not changed.
That is correct.
That is part of our, and that is what we're asking you to bless going forward.
And I get it.
Yeah. So, I apologize for that and the confusion.
Councilman Jenkins.
Thank, and again, I'm ready to, I mean, I would support moving forward. But I would also ask that if Joe Jones, citizen of La Plata, wants to look at the application package, he can either get it online, or he can go to the office and look at it. So, my concern is the citizens need to understand or know what, they need to know, this is the complete application package that is moving forward, not after slide 38 or not slide 1. This is the entire package, and the citizens then can have access to look at it. Because from my perspective, we need to be extremely, we need to be transparent. This is the application package for annexation dated whatever date it is. And so, that's the one we're going to move forward with, and that's the one the citizens should have access to. Is that correct? I mean, is that what we're going to do, right?
Correct. And I see Janine has her hand up.
What am I doing here? What am I doing here?
At least you know I'm paying attention.
Thank you. And Brent, or Michelle, please step in if we don't have room. But I would propose to bring this to the December 21st meeting. I know I have the full annexation package. Sue, I'll work with you to make sure that everything is the absolute most updated. And if you're okay with that, or if we have the ability to do so, can we bring it to the December 21st meeting? That way, we do have the full annexation plan and submission online. So, the residents have copies of it, and the town council can review it sooner rather than later, so we can still proceed forward.
And Janine, to answer your question, the answer would be, it's the will of the council. If the council would like them to sort of put together a final packet, and then have it come back before us next week, then that's perfectly appropriate. If the council would like to take action tonight, or, you know, action may be a strong word, like to move this forward tonight, they're able to do that as well. But yes, we can accommodate this if it is the will of the council on next week's agenda.
Okay. Sue, can you, can we do that? Is that doable for your team?
I am going to defer it as doable for me. I will defer to the rest of the team members. Is the 21st doable? Seth, does that give you, because I want to be very careful about our presentation in response to the town council's concerns. Does that, is that sufficient time for you?
I think, I think so, that, I should say that I was under, apparently, I guess, the mistaken impression that part of the intent this evening was to actually go back through the history of the project and the evolution of it, which was reflected in the presentation. We could have done a much shorter presentation that focused on where we are right now, had I known that that was actually what the expectation was. So, I think for the most part, it's going to be a matter of just editing down to what is the current plan and design for the project, most of which is contained in the documents on the screen right now. But I think, I think we can certainly edit it down so that it's more coherent and clear relative to what our intentions are.
I think a lot of it, Seth, is going to be eliminating documents, like the planning council.
Exactly, just editing.
Taking things out, not adding to.
Just a clean version. Councilman Goldsmith.
Yes. What I'm looking at, I don't want to see this whole thing again next, next week.
Neither do I.
And you said we're cutting it down, just the summary. If we, if we go to next week, which I don't support, but if we do next week, just the summary, because we've seen it all already.
Right.
Thank you.
Agreed, agreed. And I think that, much like we do now with our directors, they give us our report on Thursday, we meet on Tuesday, and we are not having them presented anymore. We're just fielding questions, should we have any, that haven't been answered in the interim. So, what I would propose to do is, the documents have to be, they're due by noon on Thursday. But, so for our review, what I would like to, and again, as I said, I don't like pushing it out, but I want to make a, this is, this is a big, huge decision. This isn't just, you know, 10 houses coming in. You've got potentially 2,100 houses coming in, that we have a clean document. Or, I mean, I don't, if you want to push it to January, you can push it to January, but it's, it's up to you. If you can do it next week, fantastic. But I'm not going to pressure you on such a, because it's a yes or a no. And if you present something, and we're like, nah, you know, there's your bite at the apple. I mean, you'd have to come back again. So, we, you've heard what we have said. You've heard Councilman Goldsmith saying, nah, he's okay with what's presented. You've heard Councilman Jenkins and Councilwoman Bryant Ward saying, we'd like a clean copy for the record. This is what's going to be attached, not a presentation. Again, Councilman Chollinger, I'm not sure where he stands on that. So, Sue, I'm going to, what say you?
What I, what I would request is, if you, if we could tentatively set it, and if, then tomorrow you can give me an opportunity to talk to our team, and work out the final details with Janine Harrington and Brent Manuel, that would be one, that would be wonderful. And we really do appreciate, I want to say, to the town council, all of your comments, they're extremely important, and I think you can tell that we're taking them to heart. So, I just want to be able to maybe have an opportunity to consult with our team.
Yes, I'm all in favor of that, by all means. I've heard from Councilman Goldsmith, Councilman Chollinger.
I agree with Councilman Goldsmith. I think, as it relates to what is proposed, I think it should move forward. I understand that in our Zoom environment, our Teams environment, we can have technical difficulties and presentations being uploaded, not having access to them. I don't want to penalize them for that, when they've already presented, I guess this is the second time. All of our questions that have been raised by the council are valid. But I think the mechanisms in place for input from us in the future and from the community are already there. So, I support moving forward. But of course, I'll be ready to look at it again next week, if that's what we need to do.
Okay. Councilwoman Bryant Ward.
Once Sue made it clear exactly what it is that we were looking at, starting on slide 39, I'm clear. I just want to make sure that nobody takes into consideration the past or anything, only what we're talking about tonight. And I would be good with moving forward, starting with slide 39. That's all I'm looking at, 39 to 43.
Councilman Jenkins.
I would have no problem moving forward. Again, just making sure that the public has the right package when they review it, and that, that they can access the package.
Okay. And let me ask Brent, can we upload the right package to, I guess, to this agenda? Or since this has been already town meeting, do we have to, how does that work?
Well, the, the current presentation was included with the agenda, was uploaded as stated an hour before. But it is the presentation that is applied and was presented tonight. So, I think it needs to include. Obviously, the minutes from this discussion will strongly reflect where this presentation, the relevant portion of this presentation moving forward begins. So, anyone that goes back to the minutes, which this presentation will be a, a part of the record, the permanent record. Now, if they want to submit an after the fact, we'll say an addendum, which is only the portion that specifically addresses the forward-moving portion of the agenda, you know, I don't have a problem attaching that. It may be even just something we put on our website, just to, you know, for clarification's purposes. But, you know, I think the minutes will definitely reflect where the forward-moving portion of this application or this presentation begins. So, I think that would, you know, we will make it as simple as possible for the public, obviously.
Okay. And if it can reflect in the minutes, I've heard from everyone saying that the master site development plan, which is on slide 39, is that what I'm looking at? Yes, just for confirmation. Anyone?
Yes, yeah, it starts on...
Page 39, slide 39.
Forty-three.
Right.
It goes to 43.
And that this is what we are all in consensus of moving forward, so that you guys can start, based on this information here, that you guys can start looking at the process. All right. That was a long-winded answer to say, we can move forward based on this information, because we will have several times to talk about annexation and all of that. That's, we're just getting the process going. All right. Sue, do we have anything else?
No. But again, thank you all for your patience, and for your comments and being so gracious. We appreciate it.
All right. Thank you, guys. Appreciate that. Have a good evening. It's almost bedtime, so there you go.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
Right, thank you.
All right. Next on our agenda is matters of information. Brent, do you have anything on there?
Yeah, I was just going to say that, you know, just make the council aware that we are winding down in our, what is it? It is our class and compensation study. That work is coming to a conclusion, as well as our organizational assessment. That is also coming to a conclusion. And I think we are hopeful to have those done by the end of the calendar year. Of course, the organizational assessment, one piece of that was the strategic plan. So, yeah, we're very excited about bringing those studies to a conclusion and being able to have those presented before council, probably sometime beginning of the new year, in January.
Fantastic. I do have two things under matter of information. One would be something to look at. I don't know, I know Bobby, and this might be a conversation to have in a offline, the, I'm echoing, Hawthorne Green had expressed a concern about maybe recycling and having a centrally-located place to recycle, or smaller recycling bins, because the ones with the covers are blowing, without the covers are blowing every place. So, just something to kind of talk about, and see if it's a possibility to help the, the community that is our active senior community, both them and Maples and Washington Square. See if we can just kind of address their concerns about the heavy recycling as well. Bobby was fantastic in answering about the service that we do offer to our residents that are 65 and older, and that may not be able to get, handle the big trash cans, that they are able to take it from their, by their house. So, that is a great service that we do offer, but recycling, they were concerned. The other thing is, we will be going hybrid in January. So, that is, that's exciting, that should the numbers support it. We are entertaining going back to a hybrid type of meeting in January. So, those are the two things. We'll tweak the format a little bit, so that it accommodates moving forward. Yes, Councilman Chollinger?
What do you mean, hybrid?
Hybrid.
Obviously, available for some people to go remote. What, yeah, what do you mean?
So, it will be that we will be in person, have council meet in person. And if Jim is on another Alaskan cruise, he can surely pipe in through a hybrid method through Teams. But try to get back to, if the numbers support it. I, you know, if, we never know how COVID's going to be, but that is, we had talked about that, had mentioned it before, and that's what we're looking to implement in January.
Do we have, I mean, do we have a goal numbers-wise that we are trying to get to, or hope that it will maintain for us to be able to start doing that?
I think that's going to be up to Brent and his great team to, to keep us all safe. So, I don't know what the number is. But, and again, if we're not comfortable doing that, we've got the option of Teams. And those are the two matters of information that I have. Matt, do you have another? Are you taking your hand up, hand down?
I tried, I tried to take my hand down. So, I don't have any other questions about that.
Okay. Thank you. All right. Future work session topics.
Yes, Madam Mayor, Town Council, as you can all read, we have the ARPA Funding Community Forum coming up in early January. We have the audit presentation, which will be later in January. And just piggybacking on that same ARPA funding meeting, we'll have the county proposable, proposal for commercial property rehabilitation tax credits, is something the county is holding a public hearing on tomorrow, looking at abating taxes for a certain period on all improvements to commercial property. So, we're still in the process of evaluating the county's program. We currently have a program on our books that was put into place, I guess, right after the tornado of, it was 2002. So, we currently do have something on the books, but it may be that we look at what the county's doing and see if we want to adjust ours to maybe align with theirs, depending on what the specifics of the program.
Wonderful. Thank you. Anything else for matters of information or future work session topics from council? All right. Bring us to our last agenda item before adjourning. It's public comment here. Do we have anyone that would like to speak this evening? If so, please limit it to three minutes, and state your name, your address, and whether you're in the Incorporated Town Limits.
I'd like to say something, Mayor.
Okay, go ahead.
Mike Runfola, 113 Morris Drive, within the Incorporated Town Limits. After I listened to the Hub presentation, more confused than straightened out about some things. Tonight was the first time I've heard that there was, regarding the residential units, a low of 1,594 and a high of 2,100. I've never heard the 2,100 figure before tonight. When they started out in 2013, it was a planned business park, and the acreage was, I believe, 489 acres. Then in 2015, there was 1,890 housing units and 472 acres. And in 2020, they came at us with the 1,594 residential units plus commercial in three phases, and that was 449 acres. Tonight, I hear buildable acreage, 112 acres. I'm not sure what that means. I'd like to know what the total acreage of the project is, and why would we even consider allowing a difference of potential, 500 residential units from 1,594 to 2,100? That's a lot of units. We should know exactly. I mean, Heritage Green, for 30 years, was 3,170. It never fluctuated. Fluctuation of 500 is pretty big. Also, when they started out, there was five acres behind the current Giant Store on the east side of 301. That was part of their project. I've never heard what happened to that, whether it's even still in the project or not. And I'd like to know whether the Hub officials have had any direct talks with the Super Walmart about possibly building on their property in the future. There's a lot of questions that need to be answered, and aside from all the confusion over which package... from all the confusion over which package we're looking at, there are just a lot of questions. Thank you.
Thank you very much. All right. Any other speakers this evening? With that, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
I move to adjourn.
I like that. Do I have a second?
I'll second the motion.
All in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Any opposed? Good job tonight, guys.
Thank you, everybody. Thank you, Brent and the staff. Thank you.